At this time, Mr. Smith, I ask you to plead us in the implication and plead the allegiance.
Okay. Well, thank you for the day that's been given. Thank you for this beautiful county we live in. Thank you for this display of citizenry that has come out being involved in our local government. We pray, Lord, that you would be with our board of supervisors tonight, guide their thoughts, and may this meeting go as you would have it to go for it's in your name we pray.
Amen. Pleading to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And the decorum is on the back since the fact that this page of the agenda, if everyone will please honor that, very appreciative. You'll observe the decorum consistent with any legislative or court proceeding in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The board packet contains copies of the agenda and the consent agenda. All members have had an opportunity to review those. For more, the chairman would entertain a motion if someone else would wish...
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion. Will you approve the agenda consent agenda? But I'd like to pull the budget work session out just because I wasn't there, and so we deal with that as a separate item. I don't feel like it'd be appropriate for me to hold on that as a consent agenda. So the motion is to approve the agenda consent agenda with the exception of a budget work session meeting.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Pham?
Aye.
Mr. Hobbie?
Aye.
Mr. Bill?
Aye.
Also aye. Now, to take up the matter of the budget work session meeting minutes, the chair would entertain a motion to accept those.
So am I.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say, when we endorsed minutes, it doesn't mean that we're endorsing everything that's stated in the minutes. I think there's been some implication because something's mentioned or referred to in the minutes that that's an endorsement of something that might have been said or something that might have been proposed unless it's actually voted on by the board. I don't think that that holds. So I just wanted to mention that. That's why I'll be voting no.
Okay. Please get the book.
Yeah, just one thing. I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here, but I do think that minutes are called minutes and not called seconds, right? I mean, they're not a verbatim or not supposed to be verbatim capture. They're supposed to be really a summation of what happened. But if there's issues associated with that, I think we have a way to correct that. But I think the minutes and the people that do the minutes try to get the summation of what happened actively, but doesn't always happen. But they're not a court recording. That's just a capture the consensus of what happened.
Okay. Having a motion before the board with a second. Roll call vote. Roll call vote. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Pham?
Staying.
Mr. Hobbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Also yes. Okay. Which worked out pretty good. Brings us to the public hearing time, which was set for 6:05. Then I will go ahead and make one final announcement again in case someone was to come into the building late. Anyone wish to speak concerning the proposed six-year plan for fiscal year 2022, '23 through 2027, '28 is asked to use the sign-up sheet if they've had that opportunity to let you do it. And I'm going to apologize. I forgot to steal my last readers. Appears that, okay, first pick will be Jerry Wilson.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Excuse me, Jerry. I got a little bit ahead of myself. We need to have a motion go into public hearing.
So am I.
Have a motion to go into public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a first and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Pham?
Aye.
Also aye. Okay. Now, back to Jerry. If you will, each speaker, if you will state your name and your address in three minutes, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, board members. My name is Jerry Wilson. I live at 452 Hickory Lane, Galax. And I kind of understood after I got here that I shouldn't be here on that six-year plan because it's my understanding they're not going to take anymore this year, but I asked to speak anyway because at one time, Road 786 where I live was on the six-year plan. And before they could get to it to do any work on it, the six-year plan was discontinued for a while. And then after it started again, continued again, we kind of took it that it would still be on there, but evidently it's not because I checked and it's not on that plan. And that's why I'm here tonight. We have some very serious problems down on 786. I have the names of all the people that live on the road and border the road, and they've all agreed that you can do anything with their land they need to to get that road on the six-year plan. It's a single lane. If the first half of it, it's only about six tenths mile long, and three tenths of the road was built and paved many years ago. And we kept, we would come back and try to get it on the six-year plan, and then we got it on the six-year plan, and then it didn't work out. But in between then, we have three tenths of a mile that we're trying to get paved. They came and there's a side road to 786, Amber Lane, and it's only a little less than three tenths of a mile, and they paved it. They improved it and paved it and didn't finish 786. And I'm trying, we're trying to get it on the plan to where we can get something done to it. It's a one-lane road. You can't pass on it. All the traffic that we have on it now, especially FedEx and UPS and things like that, they want to come down the road sometimes to deliver a package because they don't want to have to back out. In the wintertime, the roads, we're all gravel roads, always the last one to be cleared. There's two different times throughout the years that we've had to transport a human that's, one man had a heart attack and one had a dog bladder attack, and I carried him out on the back of my tractor to get to the ambulance. Part of the road now is, there's about a third of it washed out right below my house. My grandson has a driveway that's this far above the road. Every time it rains, the gravel and mud flow right in his driveway. We have to clean it even with a tractor or shovel. Gary Stamper has a garage down, on down below me. The road is about this much higher than his garage. It washes gravel and mud in his garage every time it rains. And every time it rains, we've got gullies from just one inch of rain last week in the road now. We have some serious problems with them, and we'd like to get something done. I have all these names, and if I could leave them with you. And there's one more new home that will be built. It's one of another grandson of mine. He's going to start building as soon as they can get the grading and everything done. So I appreciate anything you could do.
What's the common name of that road?
Hickory Lane.
Hickory Lane?
Uh-huh. I could give you, I don't have enough time to tell you what's wrong with it. It would take me about half the night. We'd appreciate any help we could get.
Thank you. Appreciate you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I believe that's Rebecca Roberts.
Let someone else speak. There's more people here than I realized. Let someone else speak.
Barbara.
Flag Pond, I guess. Okay.
Fair sorry.
Yeah. We'll get you to state your name first and your address. Sorry.
Barbara McGothard over at 163 Flag Pond Lane, Hilton Creek. It's that one.
I even mind making your name up here.
You better. You better. Can you just speak up? Did we get the batteries?
I will try. I think it's working.
It's working. It's working.
Okay, good.
I'm here today to support Ms. Jeannie Hatch. She lives on, what is it?
23. 23 Sweetwater.
Okay. It's, there's a secondary road going down alongside her house, which is Sweetwater. And I have passed that house for years before Jeannie and I became friends, and I always voted with her driveway. And in fact, my driveway is probably five or six feet wider than this secondary road is. And I've been over there several times, and I am scared to death to park there because there is really no parking. The drive, the street, the road goes right along her house, and it's only 10 feet wide. And the noise and the disregard and respect for her living there, people come tearing down that road, and I just don't like to go over there and visit because I'm afraid my car is going to get wiped out. They don't slow down. They just come and pull right on out. If she is crossing the road, they get right up on her like she's supposed to move. And her drive used to be just a driveway, but now people just think it's okay. They bring the FedEx and everything else that goes by there with huge trucks. My little RAV4 just barely has enough room to get up there without disturbing anything. So I do hope you take into consideration of closing the road so this woman can have some peace after all these years of having very inconsiderate neighbors and it just really being part of her front yard that everybody just goes through. So I appreciate you taking the time and listening, but I would guarantee not one of you here have a road going alongside your house just 10 feet away. So please keep that in mind when you're thinking it. And there is other means of egress and ingress to that road. This is not the only way that people can come in and go out. And in fact, the emergency squad will not use that road to go in because it's too dangerous. So again, thank you, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, before we continue, we maybe want to separate these out because actually, I believe Ms. Heath is here to address that situation. Do we maybe hold anyone else that has remarks regarding that to that? Would that be easier for you all?
Whatever. Please, the board is fine with us. We can hear, we can hear the citizens.
So we'll just continue.
Yeah. And then she can speak on it. We'll start.
Okay. All right. Zelda Richardson.
I think she's down in the...
Zelda Richardson.
How do you do?
Hello.
Just state your name and address.
I did.
Good to have you.
Heard it. Thank you. I recognize some of you from the fall meeting. Who can remember me, maybe? Maybe not. I'm here today on the petition to pave, upgrade, upgrade Hilton Creek Lane Road. This road is 1.8 approximate miles, and that's my measurements. 14 families live on it. We have a church on it, a couple of vacation homes. We have tree growers that own property up there. And I think to call this road a dirt road is an exaggeration. It's a mud hole most of the time, and didn't like that. It's worse for the other time. Except in the winter when it's snow and ice, then it's slushy and it's wet and it's slick. And then when it freezes, it's like a peeled onion. I'm pretty sure that's where that phrase was first termed on Hilton Creek Road. All the men on this road are constantly pulling people out the ditches. They're sliding off the road all the time. My husband, Gail Blevins, and his boys didn't have tractors or pickup trucks, so I don't know what we do on that road because it keeps them busy pulling people out. And then when we get the gravel, I'm not sure where the gravel comes from, but as sharp as it can be, it goes flat through the tires. My family, my household, it's just three people, and we've had two or three flat tires a year on that road. And to everybody I talked to getting the petition signed, every other neighbor had flat tires just recently or right on that time, and that's, that's just, that's unusual. When the roads are washboard, it drives your vehicles to pieces. You can't go slow enough on there. Keep your teeth from shaking out. One resident alone has replaced three sets of leaf springs on his truck on his trucks, and these are passenger trucks, like pickup trucks, and he's replaced one set of leaf springs on his heavy-duty trucks. It's living on the road. And he tells me that one, that one set of leaf springs should last a vehicle for its lifetime. I've checked that out and verified it, and I know that's a fact. All the residents that live on this road, all 14 households, are constantly replacing front ends and shocks on their vehicles. Almost every resident on this road has had a broke-down vehicle with these problems at one time or other and has it right now. And I want you guys to think about that for just a second. You drive to work every day. You have upkeep on your vehicles, repair, things you normally have, but if you had to replace this on your vehicles all the time, this is not normal. This is unusual, and it's expensive repairs, and it's hard upkeep. And not only that, but the men on this road constantly do repairs themselves on the road. Gail Blevins and his boys have actually, the potholes have got so bad in the road, in the road that they have actually filled those potholes in and finished off that road themselves. We shouldn't have to take care of this road like this. We're taxpaying people. We should have this road taken care of. Our men are always scraping the road in the wintertime, in the snow, in the sleet, to be able to get in and out to go to work. Then we have the dust, which is my pet peeve. It's so dusty the rest of the time. It's just allergies are crazy. I, when I leave my house to go to town, I have to schedule myself a half an hour early to get to the car wash and get that done before I go to appointments because I don't want to drive around in town with dirt all over my car. And when I started complaining about this, I found out that most of the other people are doing the same thing. You know how expensive that is to wash your vehicle every time you go to town? And then you finish, you do everything, you come back home, you drive up this road, you pull in the driveway and get out, and your car is a mess again, totally dirty. And you know what some people say, and I know what some of you are probably thinking here, and you choose to live there, you choose to live on this road, and we do, and we did. We chose to live there. Our parents, most of them have parents, grandparents, and even great-grandparents that were raised on this road and have lived there. And I've been thinking about this a lot, but the people back in those days and the people on this road did not complain. They just worked and they kept on just to get by. And when Middle Fork got paved, they all were thinking, our time's next. They'll get to us next. And then it didn't happen. And then White Top Mountain got hardtopped all the way across, and they thought, okay, they'll get to smaller roads. And then they started working on Mud Creek. I was a child, and I remember that very well because my dad had to carry me out in the wintertime to get to the hospital. But that road is so nice now. They fixed it, and it's so nice. And I've lived on Hilton Creek Lane for 27 years. And I hear the people say all the time, don't know why you're going to start this because they're not going to do anything about it. And I've heard them say, it's the system. They, there's not enough people here. Well, I've checked all that out, and there's plenty enough people to live there. We have government employees on that road. We have a mail carrier that lives on that road. We have workers in the retail business. We have people in the textile industries. We have tree growers. We have farmers. We have healthcare people. These are all hard-working people, paying their taxes, and they're so tired of this road. Times have changed, and we've changed, and we're not the quiet people that our parents and our grandparents were. This generation's louder and complains more. And here's the thing, the big thing is that Grayson County's not the poor county it was it used to be. And every one of us, when we were here in the fall for this meeting and we left here, we were all angry about all the money that was being spent on the foot trails through the mountains, the nature walks, tourist attraction, everything that's been doing, and it's getting done with foot trails and mountains, walks. We don't need those till we get our roads fixed. If we can't get in and out on our roads, then we can't go to work, and the taxpayers are where that money is coming from. And I just want to say this too. I really took offense to, when you started telling us about the six-year plan, Tom Revels wrote in a memo to DMV that we were pushy, and when we want something done, we want it done right now. I got the memo by accident, but I had to keep it just in case. But when you start talking about a six-year plan and we want something done yesterday, I feel like we've been waiting for 50,000 years to get this road paved, hardtopped. This is like the last road in Grayson County that's still just a trail, I think. And times have changed. Our vehicles have changed. Our vehicles are nicer. They're more expensive than they used to be, but this road is just like it used to be, if not worse. The past five years have been worse, and it gets worse and worse every year. We want it fixed. We need it fixed. We need it paved, and we are asking you guys to do something about this, to fix it, to make this right. I appreciate you listening to me. I hope this does some good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have a petition with everyone's signature. I gave it to them the last time. Do you need another one?
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm not being real strict on the three-minute law. I know everybody took their time out whether or not to come down here and find themselves, but out of respect for the others that are here, if everybody can try a limited to three minutes, that'd be good. But we're here to listen to you, hear your concerns, and I think this, is this Kenny Graybill? Did I get that right?
Rennie Gambrell.
Okay, also I can make it up. I told him, you win. If you will state your name and your address.
My name is Rennie Gambrell. My address is 1589 Hilton Creek Lane in Whitetop. Like Zelda, I'm here in reference to Hilton Creek Lane. First, let me say thank you for giving us time to be here, listening to our concerns. We really appreciate it. And I want to say thank you for the increase in road maintenance that we have seen since we were here last. My husband and I live at the very end of Hilton Creek Lane, and we've been there since 1977. State maintenance of Hilton Creek Lane does not extend to our farm nor to three of our neighbors. There are, like Zelda said, there's 14 residential properties on Hilton Creek Lane. More than half of them are owned by people over the age of 65, but most of those people are still working. But we do have a couple of people that are over 65 that have serious health conditions that necessitate them having quick and easy access to and from Highway 58. So when the road conditions are bad, it's difficult for them to get up to the doctor and the hospital. Additionally, there's a church on Hilton Creek Lane, a vacation rental property, and Briar Ridge Lane is accessible only by Hilton Creek Lane. And that Briar Ridge Lane, there are currently over 500,000 Fraser Furs in production on Briar Ridge. So when even a small portion of those are harvested and trucked out on Hilton Creek Lane, the road becomes just an utter disaster. It's in the fall. It's wet. We've got snow. We've got ice and rain, and it's really pretty bad. Additionally, at the very end of Hilton Creek Lane, there is a parking gate, there is a gate which gives access to the Hilton Creek Spur Trail on the Forest, on the Forest Service land, Hilton Creek Trail, the Deep Gap Trail, and a gate to the Lewis Fork Wilderness Area. So we've got people coming in all the time to hike, hunt, birdwatch, do all that kind of stuff, but the parking area is not on Forest Service land. It is on Hilton Creek Lane, and that's always potholed and, you know, full of mud. But tourism is Grayson County's bread and butter, and it would be nicer if those people had a little better access on that road because it is highly treacherous for that. And I realize that, you know, everybody's got budget constraints. Be that is no exception. Grayson County's no exception. So I, you know, I appreciate this. Ideally, paving would be great, but until then, any kind of road maintenance that we could get, further ditching, extra graveling, we'd really appreciate it. So thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. 1589 Hilton Creek? Looks like hash. Irene? Irene?
Is it, is it Sweetwater Road?
It's another one for 1589 Hilton Creek.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Should Irene manage?
I was on the hatch.[1684.13]
Hilton Creek Trail, the Deep Gap Trail, and a gate to the Lewis Fork Wilderness Area. So we've got people coming in all the time to hike, hunt, birdwatch, do all that kind of stuff. But the parking area is not on Forest Service land, it is on Hilton Creek Lane. And that's always potholed and, you know, full of mud. But tourism is Grayson County's bread and butter and it would be nicer if those people had a little better access on that road because it is highly traveled for that. And I realize that, you know, everybody's got budget constraints. VDOT is no exception, Grayson County is no exception. So I, you know, I appreciate this. Ideally, paving would be great, but until then, any kind of road maintenance that we could get, further ditching, extra graveling, we'd really appreciate it. So thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, 1589 Hilton Creek? Looks like hash. Irene? Irene?
Is it Sweetwater Road?
It's another one for 1589 Hilton Creek.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
She's not, she didn't have. We'll recall that number later on. Debbie Hash, 76 River Hill Lane, Independence. Debbie Hash.
My name is Debbie Hash. I live at 76 River Hill Lane, Independence, Virginia, which is right off of Pleasant Grove Road. First off, I want to thank the board and the VDOT representatives for giving me the opportunity to speak at the hearing tonight. I've lived on River Hill Lane for the past 35 years. And when we moved there, it was a narrow dirt road that wasn't traveled very much and that's greatly changed. We're asking for a one-mile stretch to be widened and/or paved or whatever you all can do. And on this stretch, there's over 115 private-owned camping lots that are probably mowed 30 times a year, which brings a truck, a trailer, haulin' a lawnmower weekly. When I came here tonight, I met a truck, trailer, lawnmower, car right behind it. When I backed up so they could get by, there was a truck came behind me. Then when I got by them, there was a Jeep coming in. So there's lots of traffic. There's also a campground at the end of this road. There's seven full-time homes, there's two apartments and two summer homes. And this doesn't count the homes that are built in the Twin Rivers subdivision. I don't know if there's anybody here from there, I don't have their data. With the number of permanent residents that are rising and with COVID, many people are ordering a lot of things. UPS and FedEx are on this road almost daily. And these are large trucks, it's almost impossible to pass them in most places. There's a lot of places on the road, it's only 12-foot wide or less. And people don't realize it's narrow and then they end up going over the bank. And it's really a wonder if somebody hasn't been seriously hurt. On the one mile that we would like to have worked on, there's only three cutouts that are large enough for two, like two trucks with lawnmowers on them to pass. And at last year's road meeting, we talked with VDOT and they said that maybe it might be possible to make some more cutouts during the year, but there were no additional cutouts made. There's no way to count the vehicles with kayaks, tubers, people pulling their campers in and out, but it's a tremendous amount. And if you want to go somewhere on Memorial Day, July 4th, or Labor Day, you might as well forget it unless you want to leave before daylight because you are not getting in or out. And as I've said in previous years, the traffic count has far exceeded what our little road can handle. The last recorded traffic count was eight years ago and it was 200 cars a day. They did a road count right before COVID, but it's not been added to the VDOT website. I checked it again today. I do want to thank the Baywood VDOT headquarters for what they do for our little road. They're great to put down gravel, they're great at grading the road. Our road is just too small for the amount of traffic we have on a daily basis. And I also want to mention that our road wouldn't even be on the six-year plan if it wasn't for Roger Billings. He spent hours and hours of time. I know he talked to supervisors. He's been here at numerous board of supervisor meetings. He's talked to Mr. Shepley, he's talked to VDOT. It was a dream of his that this road would be finished where it would be safe for his family, his neighbors, and anyone that wants to travel it. And I hope that you all can see that it gets done and maybe even done before the date of 2024. I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next, I have Phyllis Petty.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Petty and I live at 391 Rock chimney road, Day Lux. And I'm here concerning the same road that Debbie was talking about, which is Pleasant Grove Road, number 715, I think. And I want to say that I'm also concerned with the safety. We own a lot and we have had a rollover on our lot. And we also had a person in a lot, a few lots above us that had a rollover and they were transported to Forsyth. And I never did hear the results, but I think it was in pretty serious condition. I also know of at least two other rollovers on this segment of the road. And I would like to ask you to continue to consider us because I think the safety is a very important problem on this road. And so thank you very much for your attention to hearing this. And we do ask that you continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Danny Petty.
My name is Danny Petty, I live at 391 Rock chimney road, just across near the bridge. I'd like to thank VDOT representatives and Grayson County government and board of supervisors for letting us be here tonight in this public hearing. Shows that y'all are concerned. Been here several times before. I don't want to reiterate a lot of things that have already been spoken about. But would like to say that once you're in there and you're trying to come out, if you're one of those pulling a lawnmower or a truck or whatever, you have no place to go. You're at the mercy of somebody backing up. Because if you've got a trailer and all them up and it's 200 feet back in that bank area trying to back it, you just, it's about impossible. So you about have to, coming in, you got a choice. You can get on the upper side and let, you know, get a pull-off and let the people go on. But coming out, you got to make sure they're there or you're going to go over the bank. Especially if it's wet weather, those banks are soft and you can drop off and you can roll over. And the traffic count, I know it's increased tremendously. Maybe not in the wintertime, but I know in the spring of the year, when it's flooding, you need to get in there and do something. You can't get in there to do it, you got to do it ahead of time. And then also, if you're, it's been mentioned, the holiday seasons, summertime, even fall of the year, deer season or whatever, and there is a lot of traffic on the road. I understand we were up in the 2024 year for work done on it. I hope, I think, I've heard we're still there and I appreciate it. And if we get that done at that time, I certainly appreciate it. Thank you for your work.
Tom Simpson.
Good evening, I'm Tom Simpson. I live at 3542 River Strive, Independence, which is that road off Pleasant Grove Road. We have, and I was just counting, I think we've now got 10 houses, about five or six full-time or near-full-time residents. And we have 33 owners there. I'm the president of Property Owners Association, so I do represent the property, but I'm really speaking for us. I was actually that truck that this hash had kind of backed up to, and it happens. I'm always glad when the person in front of me sees a vehicle coming. You're in the right lane, when you see a vehicle coming, you don't know if they understand that road at all. So you get over on the left if you've got a pull-off near you. And she pulled off to the left, I pulled off to the left. And the lawnmower trailer went by on the right and there was a car right behind it. As we emerged just before the hard surface, there came that Jeep. This isn't the busy season yet. That starts next, at the end of this month, really, it's here. My wife rolled off of that road 10 years ago. And she was fortunate, she wasn't injured, she went to the hospital. Needless to say, it was a very traumatic experience for her. I was fishing in Triple Creek and she got not happy, but she couldn't get hold of me by hunting either. But that happens. You will expect two or three rollofs this summer. In addition, there's quite a few culverts that have been washed out. And I haven't, well, I guess two years ago you didn't have one, I wasn't here last year. I talked with VDOT and it looked like they might do some work on some of the bad places related to maintenance of culverts just below where Two Rivers Drive joins it. There's also a piping failure, basically where water goes through the bottom of a ditch. There is no culvert, but it has found its way under the road. And you can watch after a heavy rain, the water coming out the other side and it's eating back into the road. These are, first of all, it's a dangerous road. We've all heard that, you don't need it, to hear it a lot more, but we should believe it. There's maintenance issues that aren't being taken care of that really need to be addressed before 2024. It should have been addressed before 2022. So we appreciate your interest, I know y'all are. I know VDOT recognizes it as an issue. But concern and interest are good, we like that, we want that. This is to the point that we really need action on this road. And so 2024 will take, 2023 be much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ann Rose?
I've heard a talk about Baywood, is this the right forum?
Ann Rose?
Yes.
Okay, and just give your address.
This is a highway department.
About Baywood, I'm not here about roads. Is this the right forum? Is it at the end of the meeting?
It's at the end of the meeting.
Wait, at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, it'd be at the end of the meeting.
End of the meeting, okay.
So you wanted to do public comment? Is that what you wanted to do?
Yes, just public comment.
Yeah, there should be a sign-up sheet out there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, Ann Rose?
That was Ann Rose.
That was her, okay. Looks like Stanley.
Miloski.
All right. Did we get Stanley right?
That's correct.
I'd like to thank you, of course, my name's Stanley Miloski. I actually live in With County, but I'm property on Lost Lake Road. My daughter and my grandchildren live on Lost Lake Road. And they continually go backwards and farthest to work. And I'm going to make it short and sweet because everything's been brought up that's on these roads. The slick roads, the embankments, all this maintenance issues. Right now, they have a culvert pipe that you drive across and it's rotted out, rusted. Got gravel in it, you go across it like this. Water, you know, finds its way around the road instead of going through the culvert. Makes it slick, snow removal. And in With County, we actually address these issues. We take and chip-spread the roads, put the culvert pipes in and everything, where these folks can get in and out. I mean, and Lost Lake needs to be on this six-year plan. I mean, this is 2022, correct? So, you know, these folks have legitimate quarrels about issues of the roads or paying taxes. I don't have this problem at the county. But these folks has got major issues. I own property right beside a lot of these people on Lost Lake and it's terrible. I mean, no excuse for it. In 2022, guys, think about it. Thank you.
Anna Polly? Lost Lake? Hey there.
Hello. Bringing my crew with me. Hello, you just met my father. He said the gist of what I'm going to say, I'm Anna Polly, sorry. I live at 1081 Lost Lake Road. I'm actually here for all the people on our road. Most of them are immediate family, some just close friends. But our road is awful. I moved there 13 years ago. It's the same way it was then. There's, like you heard, culvert's out. I called VDOT months ago. They come, filled it through, filled it full of gravel, walked away. Call them again, oh, we fixed that problem, it's been addressed, it's not been addressed. Unfortunately, there are potholes that are the length of my car. You drive over, you go in the pothole, keep driving, then come out of the pothole. My father-in-law, Robert Polly, is actually sitting in the back. He's taken a tractor, our own finances filled in those potholes on our own because, you know, you can't break your car, you got to have a car. It's just, that road has been supposedly been on the six-year plan since I came into this family. The road, we'll come in on it, it's just a little narrow road. Many years ago, when it was on the six-year plan, it was denied because there was a landowner who refused to let the road be widened. He has since passed, there are new landowners there. They are willing to let that road be widened. So I would like to be considered for it to be widened, just more maintenance, less neglect. You know, we have families with small children, we have business owners, we have people who work in the high school at high levels. You know, we have healthcare workers, everyone you can think of in all walks of life that live on that road. In the winter, we're the last to be plowed. I've sent texts to my boss, I've had to call in and there's feet of snow. We've never gotten to, the cloud never came to us. We're waiting, they're like, why aren't you at work? I have a foot of snow and I can't get out because our road hasn't been paved. Send them a picture and they still don't believe you that. Oh, you're sending some off-road somewhere else, you looked this up online. No, that's my road. Unfortunately, that's how our life goes. We would love to be on your six-year plan. If you consider us, that'd be great. You know, if the UPS hates us, we don't want the rest of the world to hate us too. They stop at the first house, they know the list of the people on our route, they throw all the packages out on the porch. We'll get a call or a message, hey, you got a package at my house. Less of a tenth of a mile from your house, but the UPS is afraid to drive down our road. They're like, our truck hates. I've called them, they said our trucks aren't capable of fitting through your road with the potholes, the culverts, the width of it. You know, if a company like that is scared of your road, it's pretty bad. You know, when Lost Lake, the dam burst and it washed part of the end of the road out, there was construction, they fixed that part, completely ignored on up the road. Could have been fixed in the same setting, but it wasn't. We would just like to be noticed. Be nice to be acknowledged that we are, just because we're on the far end of the county, closer to Smith County than we are here. But, you know, we are residents of Grayson County and we love Grayson County. We would like to be taken care of by Grayson County if we would, could be able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Brewer? Ellen Brewer? She's on her way.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ellen Brewer. I live on Rocky Hollow Road, 46th Act Press Lane, Troutdale, Virginia. It's adjacent to Rocky Hollow Road, 739. And I've been coming for 45 years, trying to get some pavement. I got three-fourths of a mile done. But in the 45 years, I've got petitions with a whole lot of names. I had a son that was terribly allergic to dust. I've been to the doctor, the whole nine yards, I've been listening. I know it all, you know firsthand. The potholes, the narrow road, and I have a business on my road. It's a horse camp. It's a horse camp. Can you imagine how big they can make horse trailers with living quarters in them? Meet those. I've been hit head-on. In years past, my mail carrier has been hit head-on. I've watched school buses go around a curve where the snow was deeper, further. And the, where it's a tandem wheel, the outside wheel would be in midair. And it's a bank that I wouldn't go over because I don't think I'd be living when I got to the bottom. And my child was on that bus. Right now, the buses are not running on that road, but they will be again in two years or so. I have a granddaughter that will be going to school. There's FedEx, UPS, oil trucks, and all of those horse trailers that can be as big as tractor trailer rigs. And my son has been towing them in and everything. And you don't want to meet them on that road because you can't pass in most of it. And my question is, what do I have to do after 45 years at trying this? I was so enthusiastic 45 years ago that I could, you know, my father-in-law said, "Good luck. I hope you can do this, but I don't think you can." I gave up. I couldn't get anything. Well, my enthusiasm is gone, but my taxes keep going up. And we don't have a road that's, you can't meet people on it and pass them on a whole lot of it. And I know the potholes, the dust, all of the drawbacks. I live with it too. I'll make it short and sweet for as short as I can. I'm going through all of that too. But what do you have to do to get some road paved? I've been on the six-year plan twice and been thrown off.
Yeah, of course, I think that it was revamped in 2010, which predated, I think, everybody that's on here. I don't know why, you know, from what I understand, it was, you know, it was unrealistic, the list they had. So that's why it was revamped, but I can't, you know, really speak to.
For years, I come to every meeting, wouldn't miss a one. And during those years, and when you didn't miss any, you'd know who was coming. I've seen people get their road paved that didn't even come to the meetings, you know? How'd they do it? What if they got, I don't, I want to know. I got to know the magic pill, you know? Does it take that? What is it? And if it is, what is it? My taxes keep going up, but my road, it's not doing any better. I've seen a trailer go over. It had two horses on it. They were registered. I wouldn't want to have to pay for them because I know it flattened my wallet. That trailer rolled over the bank and how it was so steep, how it was still on the bank and not going to the bottom, which was, you got to see it to believe it. Those horses were standing on the side of that trailer. They weren't on the floor. They were on the side of it. And it would slide and, my husband tried to help tie it off to whatever he could. They used vehicles, you name it, till they could get those horses out there. And the owner, she knew what they got. She was going crazy. And she tried to pass a person as what got her over the bank. So that's what I'm dealing with. And it's not fun to get hit head-on if I did. No. My mail carrier, he said he didn't like it either. But if y'all know what the magic potion is, I'm here to find out.
We all have roads in our districts too that...
Yeah, a lot of people have some serious concerns about.
Yeah, if it goes another 45 years, I'm not going to be living there, you know, worry about it. I'd like to get it done before another 45 years has passed.
We got some time, man.
I don't know.
Couldn't prove that by me. Well, thank you for your bike sheet.
Well, any help would be really appreciated. Thank you. And I'll be coming back.
Lee, that's all that was on the list. We do have some, they have been mailed in or emailed. Make sure I have them listed in mine. Ms. Roberts?
Ms. Hatch, Mr. Hatch, is my name on the list? I signed under the public comments for six-year plan. Since your plan, I signed the paper, because I signed it all the way.
There are more people. There's whoever ran the talk here in the first one. Let's check our other list and see. They may have been on the list. Did you want to speak?
Can I go ahead? Is Mr. Fowler here, by the way?
He is.
Who's Mr. Fowler? What kind of type of information? I won't go over all of it, but I really appreciate if you read it, if you could read, especially those of you have not seen me before, like Mr.
I don't know who went to borrow these. These are nice.
You can take a moment. This is a lot of information, but it's good information. And I pulled a page out of the VDOT playbook. And it's about shared values with our public service. If I may read you, it says, "They make decisions based on facts and sound judgment. They accept accountability for their actions." So I would like for the board and the Commonwealth to make a decision to reinstate the 250 feet of Sweetwater Road that runs through my personal property. I'm not asking, I'm not here like the other speakers. I'm not asking for money. I just want that piece of now shortcut road returned back to private use. Because it is just getting ridiculous. And you can read in here, the traffic has increased. Mr. Hoyle came out and he took a look at it and he said it was not safe enough to send a rescue vehicle up that road. And I'm just, I'm begging you to please reinstate this back. I know the original road bed that's on the other piece of property is in not usable. But when you have, I mean, the fact is, tape measures don't lie. This traffic is coming 10 feet from my house. These trucks are making my house shake. They're that close. And like these other speakers, there's not enough room for these cars to pass. When Mr. Hoyle came over, there was a truck coming down and he had to back all the way back down to Sweetwater. This is a common occurrence daily, daily. I'm not asking the board to make a decision on money, emotions, status, anything. I want the board to make a decision on closing this, reinstating it based on safety. And I'm not asking for any money to do so. And if there's a magic potion, I would like some also, like the other speaker. But this is, this is just getting out of hand. And I don't think, when there's only, I'm the only, fact one is I'm the only permanent resident on Sweetwater Road. The other six houses are second homes. They're not permanent residents. They're from out of state. And I don't think that road funds, as tight as they are right now, I don't think they should be used to be put into a road for second, for second and vacation homes. And I think the people who are permanent residents here, who are registered here with their vehicles, they vote here. Everything they do is here because they're permanent residents. I think that they should be, I should just be safe. And I shouldn't have to keep coming back to the board over and over and over. This is, this, some of you people have been to my house. You've seen it firsthand. And I'm just asking you, the 250 feet that belongs to my property that was a private drive. Well, I will say this, and Mr. Fowler is here. I talked to a gentleman from Bristol. And he told me that he tried to find a file and history on Sweetwater Road. So I'm beginning to question if that was even, if that was even the proper paperwork that was done to grandfather that in. Is that a thing? I don't know. I don't know. Getting information is like pulling teeth. But I do know that Mr. Flannery told me, it took him two weeks, but he did look. And he got back to me and he said, "There is no history or file for Sweetwater Road." So does it mean it really exists within the VDOT system if there's no file? Who can I ask that question to?
Mr. Fowler and Ms. Hatch are here too. I dread to see she's here in minutes.
Okay.
What's that, Ray? Maybe everybody gets their opportunities.
Well, I apologize for my emotion, but if you, if you've been to my house and you've seen this, all the near crashes and Christmas tree vans and chemicals and stuff, you would understand. You would, you would feel the same way as I do. If you had to live with this day in and day out, traffic 10 feet from your house. Some days, there's close to 60 cars now. So. But anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I know this is third time. I hope it's the third time's a charm. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one question, clarification, Ms. Hatch.
Yes.
You're talking about from Big Ridge Road, where Sweetwater intersects Big Ridge, 250 feet?
Yes, it goes up.
Which means your wood shack in your house, that section of the road?
Yeah, um, 250 feet on both sides of the road.
Right, but that's the section you're talking about?
Yes. It's, it's dangerous. Like these other people spoke, you can't, you can't pass on that road, on that section. You can't. You have to back down.
Right.
I mean, between my yard, yeah, between my yard and my shed, it's only 12 feet wide.
Right. That's, I just wanted to make sure I understood. It's just that section you're talking about?
Just that section. I'm not asking for money or I'll put up gates. I'll do whatever I have to do. I'll come wash windows at the VDOT. I don't care. Just please, please. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I have no other names on this list. Let me go over the public comment list to make sure my name's on it.
Ellen Brewer, right there.
Okay.
She's five, right four, I'd like to block her.
Got it, yeah, I know.
Joey Murray for the road.
You're here for the road?
Yes.
And what's the name?
Joey Murray.
Okay. A few more, if we can, forward, please, ma'am.
I hope I can be a little bit positive this time. I don't, I don't think you supervisors were there whenever my husband and I came in 1990. And so it's been a long time that I've been coming back and forth to try to get Riverbend Road paved. And he passed away and I've been trying to come. And like some of the others said, this was taken off of the plan when there was no plan for a while. Then it was put back on. Half of the road did get paved. We got it paved six years ago. And at that time, we thought the rest of the road was on the same plan and it was not. So now it has been, we, at that point, it was put back on the six-year road plan. And to my knowledge, it is approved. Believe it or not, it'll happen. We think, we think. I know for sure when I see them out there doing the work. But according to what I understand, that it will be started this summer. And that would be the six-year road plan. So all of this took this many years, but it does work. And I have been here, I hadn't been here this time in six years. But before that, those first six years, I was here and my husband too, every time they had a six-year road plan meeting. So you do have to come and you have to be sure it's on your plan. And then it can happen. And I thank you and I thank the state, the road people, everybody that's done all this for this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chan, right here. Chan, for a please.
I'm going to make it short and sweet, gentlemen. Everybody's here and from what I've stood outside and heard people say walking out, but ain't got much faith. We've been on a 45-year plan, the way I see it. Last week, or it was the week before last week, I pulled a horse trailer up our road. And this is going to be a regular thing this summer with horse camp. It's a business. I've got a bobcat, a dozer, farm tractor. I've had to put my equipment on the road and fix the culvert going underneath our driveway because it washed away. That's my fuel, my equipment, my time, and I'm paying taxes. My mom's paying taxes. Mom being hit head-on. Everybody in here, everybody, has got something wrong with their roads. And we're paying tax money to get this straightened out. Don't know where the money's going. Not even asking. I don't care. But this day and time, there shouldn't be this many people here needing or wanting their roads fixed. We don't even get cell service where I'm at. I'm five minutes from the Smith County line. I have to travel out of county to get work. My family's growing up. I've got a granddaughter coming up, which is who my mom's talking about. It's going to be riding a school bus here for a while. People running up and down the road. You meet a horse trailer, you're backing up. 50 to 100 yards to get out of the way. I'm putting my equipment on the road to pull horse trailers and trucks up. We can do better than this, guys. We can do better than this. It's uncalled for. I don't understand. I just, I don't. And it's in your fellas' hands, right there. We all work here. We all vote here. We all help each other here. We're a small-knit community up here. In our end of the county, that man right there, JB's, God bless him, loved that man to death. He's gone now. But he, if he's here, he tell you too. What's going on? What we got to do? I'm a fat man. I love steak. Y'all want a meal? What have we got to do here, guys? I mean, I'm more willing to work with anybody. I'll give what land I got to make sure that a road comes through. I'll buy you a meal. I'd about put your kids through school if I could afford it, but I live in a county where you got to travel out of county to get work. I don't understand it. I don't. I would love for somebody to tell me, because I'm like, that woman right there, I'll do it. I'll do it. Please.
Your mom's.
Help us out here. I mean, I know there's stuff that needs to be done, but we're all paying taxes. I paid my taxes and I tell you, I couldn't pay my taxes. And the guy that was in front of me paid double what I was paying. And I thought it was unreal. Thousands, guys, thousands. And that's just for one person. I'm paying thousands. Come on. And there's more people here with more land than me. I don't understand it. I'll do anything I can to help you. I'll give you land. I got equipment. Boy, do it. Let's make a plan and pull it together. Anything, gentlemen, please help us. Because there's people standing out here that's walking out that ain't got a bit of faith in what's going on right here, right now. And with every time we come to these meetings, they're losing a little more faith. And if we could pull people together that lives on our road, I would have brought them. After seeing what this lady brought up and bringing files, if I got to do that, I'll do it. But the people on our roads don't give up because it ain't happening. They just watch like the people walking out right here says they wasted $4.25 a gallon gas to get here for nothing. It aggravates me. It really does. And I'm, I'm a God-fearing man. And I try not to cuss and I'm holding it back. And I don't understand it. But it shouldn't be. It's 2022. And we don't even have cell service on our end of town. We don't even have a dollar store. All we got's a gas station. You travel 45 minutes to get groceries. I've got a mom and dad that's in bad health. Something happens to them, they're dead before I can get them anywhere. And we're fighting the road to get there. And God forbid, there's a horse trailer blocking the road, but I got to go get my. And God forbid there's a horse trailer blocking the road, but I gotta go get my equipment and pull it out before I can even get my parents out to hospital. Don't make no sense. Help us, please, I beg you. I pray for you. God's watching us all. He's especially watching you all. Please. I don't know what else to say that these people ain't saying. Everybody's got a road that needs something done. And we do too. And the tax money is there to do it. Take care of your people and don't take care of you. That's plain and simple. But don't take care of your people and you're gonna get voted out or whatever. I mean, you're gonna have people start bucking on you, not wanting to buy you a steak, I'll buy you two steaks. Whatever you want, baked potato fries, beer with it, what do you want, guys? Help yourself, please. I'm going, get groceries and drive them those 45 minutes home. Fight the dirt road getting there, hoping it ain't blocked with a horse trailer. Because I hate for my milk to spill. You know? Thank you, gentlemen, y'all ponder on what we've all been saying here and begging for. Thank you, y'all have a good day. Appreciate it.
I'm Robert Pauly, can I speak?
Okay, yes, sir. Chairman, here's Mr. Board Chairman.
I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate it, ladies and gentlemen, coming to speak to you. I'm speaking again about the Lost Lake Road. I'm Robert Pauly, I live at 876 Lost Lake Road. I've been there since 1977. And the road did get some improvement about some 20 years ago or something like that. And like somebody's already said before, it was a really narrow road. And the reason that they said they could not pave it was because it was too narrow. And it had to be a certain width. So it was on at one time on a six-year plan, not now, as far as I know. And we did get it widened out, except somebody's already commented, before you first come in the road, the gentleman that owned the property would not allow them to widen the road there. So you've got about probably 100 yards that's still narrow, probably. Then it widens out, it's a pretty decent road, except that it's, there are culverts and all that stuff that's bad. As I said, they're rotted out. And big potholes that, as mentioned, I took my tractor and filled it with dirt and gravel and whatever I can find to fill, because, you know, they're big enough for a car in some of them. And, uh, but what we would like to do, we would like to get on the six-year plan somehow to have that road hardtop. And then there's probably 10 residences there. Most of them are permanent residents, some part-time. I'll have some outstaters that have some vacation property there. Most of y'all probably familiar with the road, that's where the Lost Lake, that big lake was that broke and it's gone now. But we would really like to have that road somehow get back on the six-year plan. Is there a procedure we go through to get it on the plan or what do we do?
This is it.
This is it. Okay. Does that mean it could get in this six-year plan or is that the next six-year plan or this is over with?
Mr. Board Chairman. Fowler, you want to speak to that or how the process works or?
Yeah, basically, this is, you speak up for your road and the allocations have to be there. And then once the board determines that a road to be added to the six-year plan.
Okay, okay.
But the allocations have to be there. And I'll speak to it in just a few minutes.
I appreciate it.
Unfortunately, this year, there's no additional allocations in the six-year plan, but I'll talk about that in a few minutes.
But, uh, probably the time spent on it before would aid in what would be done now. Since it's already widened up, most of it from that, except for the first 100 yards or so, would have to be probably widened and then hardtop. But in the meantime, we would like to have the potholes and the culverts replaced. They're actually rusted into and the road's fallen in. So we would like to have those replaced in the meantime. But if we could get on that six-year plan, I mean, that would be great. We'd all surely appreciate it. Appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to us. And we appreciate what y'all do. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Let me make sure we got everybody else's. One, I've got two of these. Have a Dalton. Looks like Lonnie, maybe?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
My name's Lonnie Dalton, I live in, uh, as part of North Carolina. Don't let that fool you. It's just about a mile and a half across the line. So, uh, I'm here at, uh, it gives us support for Route 715, Chestnut, Pleasant Road Road. I know, I'm not going to bore you with details because Mr. and Ms. Petty and Ms. Hatch and the other fellows done a real good job with it. I'd just like to say that I'm one of those people that has a camp road. And, uh, it's a, it's a dangerous, dangerous situation. School bus runs part of that road. Two of the guys that run the whole road. And I'd have hated for my kids to have been on the bus. I'd just like to say, uh, like to invite you, on a Monday weekend, about 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the evening, to take a ride up the road. I'd hate to have this and I laugh like these fellows have got. And I know you did a good job, appreciate you if you can help us out.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That leaves only a person I had on the list was Ann Rose, and that'd be during the public comment period. Don't make sure to have anyone else. Was there anyone else here to speak on the road? Okay. Hearing that, I do have some letters that have been sent in. And so, since I have readers, maybe we'll be in good shape. First one is a letter received from Ms. Sue Collins. And this is regarding Chestnut Lane in Freeze, Virginia. Saying, "I'm writing to ask if you would please consider paving this road on 84 Chestnut Lane in Stevens Creek. I've been living here since the 60s and now I'm 76. There are about 10 houses on this road. They're building a large house, they are building a large house over in the pines behind me. The school bus goes down this road and I have all those allergies and all this dust don't help. Thanks for anything you can do." This is from Laura Snyder. "I've been a resident of Grayson County since 2012. As a retired RN with extensive experience in rehabilitation of spinal cord and brain injured patients, I'm well aware of the importance of safe, safety precautions to preserve health, especially for senior citizens and those with disabilities. I have been friends with Ginny Hatch for many years. While she has visited my home many times, I've only been to her home a few times. Why? Because there isn't a safe place for me to park. My age, 71, and joint problems necessitate my walking slowly. Available parking in front of her woodshed means crossing what is historically a driveway, which is now being used as a road by speeding cars, trucks and trailers. Poor visibility and speeding vehicles are a safety hazard for me to even consider walking from the parking area to her home. When I learned the history of Ginny's home, number one, her original driveway does not meet current legal requirements to be utilized as a road. Two, there are alternate routes of access to properties on Sweetwater. Three, there are safety and security issues to the property driveway being used as a road. It is a reasonable, it is, it is reasonable for the safety and privacy of Ginny, her family and friends to request reinstatement of her section of the driveway as personal property driveway sanctioned by the Board of Supervisors for the installation of a gate at the legal border of her property on the drive at 23 Sweetwater at her expense. Thank you for your consideration, Laura D. Snyder." Okay, this is from Amy Boucher, 402 Pine Mountain Road, Independence, Virginia. "To the members of the Grayson County Board of Supervisors, I support Ginny Hatch's request to have 250 feet of Sweetwater Road that runs through her property vacated as a public road and returned to private ownership. The first time I turned down Sweetwater decades ago, I could not believe that it was a road as it appeared to run right through someone's yard. And it was so narrow, you were practically touching the buildings on either side. This road is an accident of history and should be corrected for both Ms. Hatch's sake and for the safety and welfare of the travelers traveling public. Please ask VDOT to vacate this portion of road and return it to private hands. Thank you, Amy Boucher." And that appears to be it. I believe before we had Ms. Herr Fowler and Ms. Heath speak, the boards are gonna take a close... Okay, we're gonna wait and close the public hearing. So they have a motion to close the public hearing. They have a second, any discussion?
Six.
Okay. All in favor, signify as soon as I... Also, I... Uh, we're gonna take a brief break until about 7:30. Give everybody a chance to stretch their legs and take a little break. And then Mr. Fowler with VDOT will be speaking. And Ms. Pam Heath with VDOT is also here. Someone has questions for her.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm Andy Fowler with VDOT and Ms. Pam Heath with VDOT, we work in the same office and with field residency, which oversees Grayson Lane and with counties. And I'm here to speak on the secondary six-year plan, the public hearing.
Yes.
Comments? And Ms. Heath came to speak to the Sweetwater issue with Hatch. So, in whichever order you'd like when we come back, um, I'll come up and speak.
Thank you, sir. Give reasons for about five minutes. Go ahead and call our meeting back to order. Mr. Fowler?
Chairman, Mr. Hatch, I'm gonna let Pam go ahead and address the Sweetwater issue and then I'll get into the six-year plan.
Thank you.
Hello.
Amy.
I wanted to talk about the abandonment process for a secondary road. We have, VDOT has different processes. And in this case, for Sweetwater, it would be an abandonment of a secondary route without replacement road. And that just means we have another process if we were actually building a new road and had to abandon the road because of the new road. That's not the case here. So we're gonna abandon, the request would be to abandon this road without a replacement road. And the process is, the county would send a letter or email, even in writing, to VDOT to request that a section of Sweetwater be abandoned. And then there, because there's no new road to take the place of this section, we'd have to have public involvement. And the public involvement piece is a notice of intent to abandon. Would have to be advertised in the newspaper. And it can, well, it can be advertised in the newspaper, a sign can be placed on the courthouse door or signs can be placed along the road to let the public know that... It's up to the county that has choices on how they want to advertise it. But it has to be advertised for a period of 30 days. And if no one objects after, you know, seeing it on the road or reading it in the newspaper, if there's no objections to the abandonment, then the county would draft or execute a resolution to VDOT. And then it's just steps of getting some information together and sending it to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for review. If there are objections, then the county would have to hold a public hearing. And those objections, if those people show up at the public hearing, they would have to be documented and sent to the Commonwealth Transportation Board along with the request. And then the CTV would review the request and the objections. And it would be up to them to approve or deny the abandonment. But that's basically it. There are some more steps and things, but basically that's the process. And I have, I brought some, y'all would like to have a...
What was the acronym, the board that would review that?
Commonwealth Transportation Board. In Richmond.
Does that, does that have the step-by-step that you just described?
Uh, it's a flow chart, uh, how it would have to be developed, how the process is developed.
Ms. Heath, so in this case, you know, Sweetwater connects Big Ridge to Falls Ridge, Falls Road? Is that the, anyway, it's a connector, is that right?
It's serendipity, I think it's messy.
Yeah, but there's another road on the other side.
It's serenity.
Serenity, yes.
That's it. So we're talking about just a small section on the northern end of, southern end of Sweetwater. So is that, when we closed this, abandoned this road, whatever the right language is over here in Independence last year?
Curry Street.
Yeah. Is it similar process to that?
It is, it's the same process, actually. We, and I worked with J.W. Lack to get all that documentation, paperwork done to the CTV, and it was approved.
Right. So, meaning in this case, because it's a through road, is it, uh, is it likely or is it possible, more likely? I mean, if it was a lane and somebody was on the other end, that was, you know, obviously that ain't gonna work. But in this case, since there is an alternative route out the other way, I mean, what's your experience on it?
Well, you know, if there are objections because people say they use that and it's a quicker way to get to Route 58 or way to get to town or whatever, then the CTV, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, will look at that to see if those are valid arguments.
Right.
And they have been denied in the past if there have been objections because people want to use the road. It's a public road and they want it to remain public.
Right.
So, but I just can't, I don't know how they would rule on this one.
Right, I understand. The board just... Right, understand. Just more just a clarification.
And because it is just a section, it's not the whole road, it's just a section of road and they do have access around. I think it's like a three mile additional or. I didn't check it or anything, but, but, so that may sway them. I mean, it could go either way.
Right. Okay, thanks, Chief. Is there any way to address Ms. Hatch's question about whether or not it's truly a road, a deeded road?
Well, I was talking during the break, I found a map from 1940 that has that road. I mean, actually, it was two different route numbers at that time in 1940. It was 764, which is where it is today, and also 662. And then in 1950, we kind of, I guess we did some change, made some changes and then it all became, we renumbered it to all 764 down to Big Ridge Road. So we have a county map from 1940 that shows that connection.
Thank you.
What road was you referencing that we closed last year?
Uh, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the route number, but it was Curry Street.
It's a little section across from Osmond Hotel out here.
Oh, okay.
It's in, technically in town.
It was a circular road off of 58 and we abandoned a section of it.
Okay. And you said we would need to advertise. You listed some different ways. Is there just one way that's required or more than one way?
The county has a choice. And let me see if I can. You can choose either, I'm just going to read a section here. You can choose either to post a notice of intent to abandon at least three days before the first day of a regular term of the Circuit Court at the front door of the courthouse. Or you can post a notice of intent to abandon and at least three places on and along the highway to be abandoned for at least 30 days. And also, there's a piece that would be advertised as well in the newspaper. So you have some choices there of how to abandon your intent to, how to advertise your intent to abandon.
Right. Okay. So if this board agrees to pass that resolution and it goes on to the CTV and they don't agree with our decision, is there an appeal to that process?
There is. And I would have to do some digging here in this, but I think you can appeal it. And actually, I think it has to be appealed to the Circuit Court. So that, and I can actually give you, or Jada, the link. It's, this is the document about, that kind of outlines all the different ways to abandon or add a road to the system and that kind of thing. So it's fairly lengthy. But I can, I can pull that section out and send it to you.
Okay. Well, I guess I just wanted to know if CTV doesn't agree with what this board decides and they're not the end all, we still have another avenue if we're trying to support Ms. Hatch.
And similarly, if they agree to abandon, property owners on the road can also appeal it to the Circuit Court to keep it open. So there's still both ways.
My head, Mr. Chair.
Has the, have we provided sufficient notice to VDOT on this particular issue?
Well, right now, we've kind of talked about it, but I haven't gotten anything formally. So if I can just get a letter on county letterhead that asks us to abandon that section of roadway. We can, I can work with Jada then to get it advertised.
I was going to say, Ms. Black is aware of this process and has done it before like on Curry Street. So we can work with you to beat the process.
Separate. Separate road. I think you and I were emailing about Greenhouse. Landowners, I've talked to one specifically, Ash's, Ash is a common theme, I guess tonight. But they were concerned about Greenhouse and they say that the property owners all down there agree. I've only talked to them, but same sort of thing to get it into the consideration for possible abandonment would be for the county to send you a letter asking you to look at it. Is that fair?
Yes. And also, just as a side note, if someone doesn't live on the road, they can also object. If they use the road, if they live on a joining route or somewhere nearby and they use that road to get to work or whatever, they can object to the CTV. They can object to the closing or to the abandonment.
Right. Okay.
So it's any motorists that might use that road has the option to object to it.
Right. But that's the process. I mean, we just got to, in order to get it resolved, it's best to get it in the process and then run it through and then see what comes out. Is that fair?
Yes. And another thing, if you want to advertise a notice or a willingness to hold a public hearing and like I said, no one objects, if you think there's going to be objections, instead of, you know, spending, I guess, the funds to advertise a notice of willingness, you could just automatically advertise the public hearing and go to a public hearing if you feel there will be objections.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So I'm due to this process. Some of the roads that we have say no longer state maintained, would that be the status of this road or is that a different status?
Well, it would be a different status. This would be, if we abandoned it, VDOT would no longer maintain it. And because this is a prescriptive route, Sweetwater, it would revert back to the property owners. Because our easement that we have, a prescriptive easement, is 15 feet from the center line of the road in both directions. So if we abandoned it, that 15 feet goes back to whoever owns the, or whoever has the deed to the property. Because we just have an easement to maintain it. If it were a true right of way that we owned, then it would be a different process. But both Greenhouse and Sweetwater are prescriptive easements.
Do we have to put it in the form of a motion to get the letter done or is that just something we ask staff to follow up?
As long as I get a letter, I'll.
My recommendation would be to put in a motion to direct staff.
For both roads? I have a motion for the abandonment of both roads. I have a second. Mr. Anderson, second. Any discussion?
Just for clarity, it's Sweetwater Road and Greenhouse Road for the motions.
Hearing no further discussion. Roll call blue. Mr. Anderson. Mr. Fain? Mr. Ivey? Mr. Milton? Also aye.
I work with you anyway.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Amy. Andy Fowler, Residency Administrator with Phil Residency. And I'll talk for a few minutes about the six-year plan. I broke it already. There we go. Okay, so I will say that during the course of the public hearing, we're taking notes on all of the maintenance issues that were brought up. So we'll go ahead and get with our local area headquarters that oversee those routes and go ahead and look at the culvert pipe issues that we heard about and the pothole issue. So we'll look into doing that first and foremost. So we'll get that going immediately. As for the six-year plan, as I mentioned in the last meeting we had to discuss in the workshop, to discuss the allocations for this year. Due to inflation, rising cost of petroleum, our pavement, our materials that we use to build these roads have all increased in price. And that affects VDOT as much as it affects us as citizens. So it's affected our pricing. So basically, what we had to do this year, I'll just reiterate what we mentioned in the last meeting, was we had to use this year's allocations to the six-year plan to update the cost of the projects that are existing on the plan. And currently, we have 17 projects on the plan totaling $4.5 million. These seven, these 17 projects vary from, they'll be started this year to starting in 2027. And so what we're doing by using this year's allocations to cover the inflation costs and the increased pricing on all of our materials is basically we're utilizing these allocations to update the pricing so that we can, so that we can keep this a true six-year plan. Because I've heard it mentioned a few times tonight and we hear the same type things in With County as well. I'm over With County, Blaine County, and Grayson and we all face the same issues. And the boards face the same issues. We all have dirt roads. We have many more miles of dirt roads than we have allocations of funding to pay. So it's just a, we chew away at it. We're biding the time until, you know, we get to that last road that's still gravel. But in the meantime, we just have to just keep chipping away at it. So basically, this year's allocations increase the pricing. What's happened, we've typically put the roads on our six-year plan and it typically costs about $220,000 per mile to do a rural rustic build, which is grading, ditching, new culvert pipes and surface treatment. And due to current increase in pricing, we've had to bump that number up to $275,000 per mile. And across 17 roads, basically, those 17 roads. Yeah, those 17 roads vary from .2 miles to 1.8 miles. We have 1.7s, 1.3s. And basically, those totaled, the current total was $3,260,000 in six-year plan. And with the updated costs, we're at $4,510,000. And so we had allocations this year of just over a million dollars and all of that had to go to updating the price on the current projects that are currently on the plan. With that said, hopefully what goes up will come down. And at some point, we're going to level off and hopefully this inflation will level off and pricing will start to go back down. And I anticipate that will happen. I hope it does because this inflation's affecting us all. So with that said, as pricing comes back down in future years, let's say two years from now, pricing's back down and we're able to build a road for $228 a mile again, then if we come in under on the road, that funding stays in the six-year plan. So it doesn't get lost. So basically, that funding will stay. If we come in $40,000 under on a road, that $40,000 stays within this Grayson County six-year plan and can be used to add other roads to the plan. And then, of course, we get a yearly allocation. So next year's allocations will go to adding roads. We've had some question tonight as to how do I get my road on the six-year plan and what are, what are the steps? Obviously, this is the first step, present your case to the board. And then we've taken notes of all the roads that were mentioned tonight. So what we do is we go out and we look at these roads, we survey them, we check to see if they meet the rural rustic requirement. And rural rustic is the method in which we build roads. And basically, the rural rustic concept is we have to build within the existing lay of the road. We can't straighten out curves. We can't do major excavation on steep slopes and things of that nature. And we can't acquire right away. So we have to build within the curvature and the lay of the road as it exists. And one of the things with the rural rustic concept is the existing width of the road. A lot of times, we're running into issues like where a road is only like 12 feet wide or 13 feet wide. We typically need 16 feet. If we have 14 feet existing, we've got a little room to widen it just a little bit without major construction or purchasing right away, then we will deem that rural rustic build and it can be added to the plan. But some of these routes that we go out and review, and I can't speak to the, some of the roads that were mentioned tonight, we'll have to look at them and see if they would qualify. But if they're very mountainous routes where there's like a steep slope on the lower side that may go to a stream or, and usually when you have that, you've got a steep cut slope on the upper side where there's like a ridge or a mountain there. So you don't have room to widen the road without a major construction project. And that takes us outside the concept of rural rustic. And so the secondary six-year plan is basically, we have to be able to build within the rural rustic concept to meet the qualifications to utilize the allocations that are specified strictly for the six-year plan. And Mr. Shipley had asked during break if I can provide documentation that kind of gives a step-by-step, and I will provide that to you. We have step-by-step as to how, you know, you address the board, you state your case, and then we go through the whole process. So I will provide that to you guys. So said all that to say this, this year, we did spend all of our allocations to upgrade the pricing on the projects that are currently on the plan. And this allows us to keep this a six-year plan. I've heard mention that roads had been on the plan in the past and then they got dropped. And I think what had happened, and I can't speak to this, I'm like Mr. Hatch. I managed the tunnels for, Big Walker and East River Tunnels for 12 years of my career with VDOT. So I've been on this maintenance side for the last 10 years. And I know, like you had mentioned, about 2010 or so, they revamped the plan. Because what had been happening in the past was whenever a road was mentioned, they just added it to the plan. The board, you know, they just added it. So what was happening was, we were having, right now, we have 17 roads and all roads are, the allocations are there to build those roads. But when you add roads and you don't have the allocations and you don't have a six-year plan anymore, it becomes the 20-year plan and what have you, where there's never funding to finally get to those roads that were added where there were no allocations to support it. So we're, for the last at least 10 years, I know under Jeff Russell, that he was very adamant about making sure that we kept a consistent six-year plan and don't get outside of that because then you have roads that sit on the plan for seven, eight, nine, 10 years or longer. So I appreciate the board's work and the county's work and how you work with us to make sure that we do maintain a true six-year plan. So that when somebody knows that their road is added to the plan, it will be done within six years. Any questions for the board?
Couple, couple questions. So, you know, Pleasant Grove Road, we've talked about it multiple years. Roger Billings, you know, was a champion for what has happened with getting it where it is on the plan anyway. But, you know, with as much development that's occurred down there for recreational as well as residential, when does it, when does it move from being a, you know, our responsibility to prioritize it for the secondary road versus become a construction project? Because the traffic count and the issues there related to that particular road demand, when does, when does it not, when does it become something beyond what we're able to do? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we do have a smart scale program, Pam, and a road can be taken in. Well, these roads are already in the system. So what's the process for, if the board wants to present a route to the smart scale?
If you want to do a smart scale project, you have, there's a lot of documentation, planning and things, but it becomes a construction job and it's not something that we do in the maintenance.
Right.
From it. It becomes a full-blown construction job.
Right.
And they look at benefit to cost ratio and those kind of things. And I'm not saying it wouldn't get funded, but it's going to go up against like safety projects and things. Every year, we do, we have a smart scale portal opening where you submit projects. And each year, it goes against projects in Northern Virginia where they might have fatalities and things like that. So historically, funding has gone to those kind of projects. But you could apply, I mean, and try to get a project funded to widen and improve that road.
Yeah, because we've had, I think, a couple of smart scales approved, maybe three now in the county. And this issue, I mean, Pleasant Grove Road's not going any better, even if you can go in there and widen a few spots, which I think is basically what we're trying to do in 2024. But the reality of the development that's going on there and the reuse, I think, is we're moving into a different category. And so that, that may be the way to address that. Second question is, so for like Rocky Hollow Road and. Second question is, so for like Rocky Hollow Road and Pleasant Grove also, but it sounded like there's several of these roads that might fall into the safety funding. Are there alternative funding sources other than... Because several people just wanted the road widened. They didn't necessarily want tar and chip. Is there a way to look at some of these roads and say, yeah, this, like Rocky Hollow, this road definitely needs to be... Because there's a campground up there now and people are using it all the time.
Right. And there again, that would fall under the smart scale.
That's another smart scale.
Yeah.
I thought there was some safety money, but that's all smart scale.
Well, there is county safety money. We typically utilize it for safety issues such as like a need for guard rail or maybe a slope. We've got a section of 658 in Troutdale area that we're working on now, where we're building the shoulder out, where the edge of pavement just drops straight off.
Right.
So we're building that shoulder out and making it wider to accommodate guard rail. So we use it for things like that. But as far as like, I'm going to say a road rebuild or a road upgrade, typically, we can use it for that.
Is this border or is it access to any federal lands?
You know, it's probably pretty close to where that campground is. It's probably right up against the national forest.
Because we have Federal Lands Access Program, LAPP, that funds road improvements to get to federal lands. And that's... And I had spoken to JADA about that this past fall. It's coming around again. There'll be a new round of funding open. So we can look at that. It's just, I mean, we can apply for it and may not get it, but it's something.
If we don't ask, we definitely aren't going to get it. Is that something that we need to put into another motion for you all? Or is that... How does that work? I know the smart scale, JADA, kind of, that's her role.
Well, I've already been working with JADA to, you know, for some other trails and things that... For that LAPP funding. So we can just add that to the list.
Okay.
And we're talking about Pleasant Grove.
This one is Rocky Hollow.
Rocky Hollow, okay.
Lost Lake.
And Lost Lake maybe is too.
Okay. If any of them have access to federal lands, then they're eligible for that LAPP funding.
Rocky Hollow probably.
Lost Lake is on Lost Lake.
They'll not get funded, but...
Is Rocky Hollow too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what your procedure would be, but basically, if you can make a list of those routes that you want to run through JADA and then JADA would work with Pam there again and apply for this funding, smart scale and federal funds.
Yeah, I'll do the motion if the chair will get time.
Yes, sir.
So the folks that come here tonight with new roads and were not adding, I mean, did you take... Do they need to go through another process next year to get added to the six-year plan? Or would they maybe be theoretically on a seven-year plan?
Yeah, typically, what we do is we hear. We hear what you're saying. We're back there writing like crazy. When they were mentioning a route, I was looking on the route number conversion for each name they gave. And so Pam has detailed notes back there that we were taking. So we have a list of what was mentioned tonight. And obviously, your minutes will show a list of what was mentioned tonight. So what I typically recommend is that we don't forget. So like next year, when we have allocations, that we would have that list readily available. So basically, I'll keep like tonight's public hearing. I'll have a list on my hard drive on my computer, where when we start the six-year plan process again next year, then, or the same process, then we have a list of roads that were mentioned last year. Because sometimes what happens is, like, I heard some of the folks mention that I came with the board for 40 years and what have you. And sometimes what happens is, and this is no fault of your guys at all, if the board changes and we had a six-year plan public hearing last year and they mentioned four or five roads and we heard that, it can easily be forgotten when we have new board members. Because then we have another agenda and then we have another group mentioning more roads or different roads. And then it may tend to be forgotten. So I'll have a list. If the board keeps a list, then next year, when we're going through the six-year plan process, I'll have allocations, whatever allocations we're given next year for this program. And then we can determine how many roads or how many miles of roads we can add to the plan next year. But I would just keep a file with the routes that were mentioned tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we ask VDOT to work with our planning department to explore smart scale funding or federal funding based on the location of the project for Rocky Hollow Road and Lost Lake Road.
Okay, motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion before vote?
Just to make sure, what's that? Did I capture what we were trying to do?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Given how much acreage is in federal lands in Grayson County, would it not make sense to identify all of those roads and give access to the federal lands instead of just being specific to those two? I know it may be a longer process. Not opposed to putting those two, but, you know, here, there's so much this county that's in federal and state parks. Maybe an opportunity we can provide access for our citizens just because of locality to the federal lands. There's probably more than those two roads out there.
Yeah, I'm wondering if from a process and a focus standpoint, that we move forward with the first, you know, those two roads that we identified tonight, but then we can do a separate one to ask the planning department to work with VDOT to identify the rest of those roads and we might be able to handle that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah. So... Well, I was just thinking that if we did all the roads like you mentioned, it might muddy the waters and put these at the back.
Yeah, so I think we... Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I'm doing it. That's what I was... I didn't know you used to talk.
Do you have further? Okay. So I recommend we do that first motion and we can make a second one follow-up, if that's okay.
Do you have a motion before the board with a second? No further discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Pham?
Aye.
Mr. Ivey?
Aye.
Mr. Belt?
Aye.
Also aye.
Can then, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we ask the planning department to work with VDOT to identify other potential roads that border state or federal properties that might qualify for funding for improvement.
Okay, motion before the board. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion further, Mr. Anderson?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Hearing no further. Roll call vote, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Pham?
Aye.
Mr. Ivey?
Aye.
Mr. Belt?
Aye.
Also aye.
Sounds like you've got some work to do, Pam.
Yeah, but we still don't get a steak dinner until you get it done.
Okay, so the other thing I'll need is just for you guys to... Yep. Just approve the six-year plan as presented and then we'll move to the resolution stage.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion we approve the six-year plan as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Pham?
Aye.
Mr. Ivey?
Aye.
Mr. Belt?
Aye.
Also aye.
Okay. Unless you have any other maintenance issues you want to speak up, speak now or hold off until Mitch emails me next week.
One thing from the... What's the question? Pleasant Grove Road, safety, can that be added as a safety deal instead of a guard rail?
Yeah, we can look into using the county safety funds for that. And what we're going to do is, we're going to... Like I said, we took notes. And basically, we're going to get with our area headquarters for all the routes that were mentioned that were mentioned as maintenance needs. And we'll see what those maintenance needs are. And it may be very well that we can use some county safety funding for some of those fixes.
But so unclear though, but from the administrative standpoint, that smart scale piece for Pleasant Grove, is that... Did we give you what you needed on to try to go after that process? Because it seems like that problem is not going to go away. Even if in 2024, if we do guard rails and all that, we're not an assault problem.
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next on our agenda will be reports, presentations, and requests via video. Mr. Al Wicks, PhD, PE, Associate Professor at Department of Mechanical Engineering, Virginia Tech.
I can hear you. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we hear you great. Thank you. Glad to have you.
Well, it's a pleasure. I hope that you guys are not all worn out. That's been quite a meeting so far. Just getting warmed up. All right. Well, I can... I'll see if I can eat you up snore. What I'd like to do is kind of introduce where we are, what we're working on related to Baywood and the exercises that have been taking place over the spring semester. While I've been waiting here to get online, I have been grading final exams. So the time has not gone to waste. So let me start out and kind of give the background. I got involved with this, what I call outreach, which is, as you'll see later on, an opportunity for my students in mechanical engineering to interact with high school students, to be able to expose high school students to all the great technologies that I play with on a day-to-day basis. My background is primarily autonomous vehicles. So I do a lot of instrumentation and we use GPS, just a variety of fun technologies. And how it all got started was that I was interacting with some students... Let me turn on the light here. I was interacting with some students at the year in Blacksburg, at Blacksburg High School. And I got abused, verbally abused a bit by one of the school board members from Radford and saying, why are you doing this for Blacksburg and not letting, you know, not doing the same thing for Radford? So from there, I had a number of discussions with people in Radford. We've had some open houses where we invited high school students to come in and we demonstrated a lot of the autonomy, the technologies, and got extremely good feedback. And from that, that's been going on now for four or five years. From that experience, we've been attempting to create a process, let's call it a process, whereby my juniors and seniors in mechanical engineering and electrical engineering can interact with high school students and share the technology. And the goal really at this stage is to provide the opportunity that I was fortunate enough to have growing up. I was a farm boy, rural upstate New York. I wanted to be a farmer. My dad was smart enough to hit me in the side of the head and say, you know, go get an education. And that's what I did. The students in southwest Virginia need that same opportunity. And what we're trying to establish through Baywood and through other activities is to establish this continuing link that allows my students and the teachers in southwest Virginia to interact and provide demos and experiences, hands-on experiences, that the students can get some extended education in what I would call enhanced experiences. They don't have to become engineers. I'm not trying to make them engineers. I'm trying to give them an opportunity from all the counties. And as you know, as we go south out of Blacksburg, the quality of some of the high schools is not all that great. And these kids deserve to at least see what they can experience if they want to. So what we are now, as we move in here to the spring, I ran a class. And the class was designed to use my engineering students to augment the teaching experience. And we did some things with drones at Radford. Students loved it. The first meeting we had, my senior went over and was showing them how a drone worked and everything like that. Not many questions. Second time he went over, there were all sorts of questions. They built drones. They went out and tried to fly it. It was kind of windy and didn't work all that well. And the students were all excited how to fix it. And it was just an eye-opening experience for me and for the teacher is that this is student-on-student mentoring. Bottom line is, the high school students win. My students certainly win. I got feedback from them and they said, this was the most important class that they had had because they learned more. You learn by doing. And we all experience that on a daily basis. So once it's planned for the summer, and Grayson is going to be included in this if you're interested, as well as Galax and Carroll, all the counties in what they call Region 7, I'm going to have the opportunity to speak in front of the Region 7 school board, school superintendent's meeting. That's going to be sometime next month at Washington County. But anyways, what that entails is we are working during the summer to set up two competitions. One competition is going to be a light show, which is a... We were going to do some things where make it a big deal. But what we've decided is that the first time we're going to go through it, we're simply going to do the school emblem. For example, my mechatronics class did a big VT and headlights on it. And the LEDs are multicolored. They're individually controlled. So what you end up, bottom line, is you get the students to start to be able to program with an old microcontroller on there that they can program and create a very complicated light show. It would be my intention that they would also maybe link in some music so that you get the cross coupling between the technology and the students that are more art-driven to be able to put this show together. So the idea is that we're going to develop the rules. I've got some meetings coming up at the end of this month to kick off what the rules are going to be. They're going to be relatively simple displays. So for Grayson County, it might be a big GC for the high schools or whatever your, maybe you want for your, you know, for your school teams, whatever you want. Radford is going to make what they call a rocking R for Radford. As I said, we did VT, those types of things. And then in September, the first four weeks in September, we're going to sit down with the teachers, with the high schools that are interested in participating and kind of establish the rules and how we're going to do that. And then we will provide, I'll provide students here at Tech for a mentor for each of the teachers that are involved in this competition so that we will teach the students how to program a microcontroller, how the LEDs work, how they can build their entry into this competition. And then come the holidays, we will establish someplace a general competition where everybody will come together. And I will ask members of the board of supervisors, if you'd like to do that, to be some of the judges. I'd like to get a judge. I'd like to get a judge, I'd like to see a competition, and in general have a pretty good time. Now, with that said, we've addressed the issue, this is not something that will cost the schools any serious money. We're going to limit the cost, that no school can put more than $150 into this light show. We can buy, the lights will probably cost 100, and it'll be probably close to 1,000 individually adjustable LEDs. These apply would, will limit the size of that, so that as far as this initial opportunity, it will simply be very inexpensive. If the schools can't afford that, I will make sure that the schools get the $150 worth of equipment. To me, that's not a big deal. What's more important is to start to establish this relationship that allows these students at Virginia Tech, and it could be other universities, obviously, to interact and support some of the teachers. Teachers are overloaded, underpaid, a variety of other things. I'm sure that you have to deal with those things. So my goal is to support them as much as I can with that expensive drones. That will be discussed this summer. I am working with an international organization, AUVSI, you may, some of you may have heard this. They established a drone competition called Punch, which is more drone racing. We're going to move away from the drone racing aspect and do more of the autonomy. So the drone will be pre-programmed, students will pre-program it to exhibit very specific behaviors. Go to point A and then go to point B, hover at point B, then go back to point A, go to point C, those types of things. Maintain a certain altitude, hover, go down drop altitude, 10 feet or whatever. Again, that is going to be in conjunction with AUVSI. That is a longer-term competition that we're planning. It would be nice, I would be happy if I could have a pilot program, maybe for the fall, but more likely it will be pushed off the spring, just so we can get better organized and make some of this stuff happen. The investment in that is a little bit more, probably in the range of $1,000 or $2,000 per school. A lot of that, I think, can be addressed through some donations and funding that I plan on pursuing through the Commonwealth Educational Program. And last but not least, much longer term, is a ground vehicle competition. I'm very heavily involved with TORC Robotics. Some of you may know TORC, they're all autonomous and competed in the DARPA Grand Challenges, Urban Challenge, and so we're interested in ground vehicles. So the idea behind that is to have a small ground vehicle. When I say small, I'm not talking about little remote-controlled cars type of thing. I'm talking golf cart-sized vehicle that will be programmed by the students for behaviors and perform certain tasks and exercise some of the technologies that is so necessary for autonomous systems, which will be coming soon. Another thing that we've looked at, and I'm planning a study, and I don't have any serious plans, but I'm an astronomy nut. I don't have a telescope or anything like that that I use all that much, but I certainly like to read it, and I keep track of what's going on with the web telescope. There is, very inexpensively, when I say inexpensively, a couple thousand dollar investment in a telescope, and I can demonstrate taking beautiful pictures of different galaxies, of the planets, Saturn, with some of the photography capabilities associated with that. And I have a graduate student, a Ph.D. student, who's very interested. He actually works for the Patriot Times as their photographer, who would love to be involved. So in kind of in the background, I think I'm going to try to put together a little demo. I can come down to Baywood, and we could go out some evening out and actually take some photographs and have some fun, and just invite people from the community to come out and participate and enjoy a warm spring or fall evening to look at the stars. So that's kind of where we're going. I'm looking forward to this. I've worked with Bill for the last couple, three years now, setting up the internet. The idea again is to have Baywood as kind of being the focus for this to take place, where I can do Zoom meetings, my students can do Zoom meetings, and train and mentor students that want to participate in this. So I will open the floor up to quick questions, as long as Bill allows me to answer questions.
Professor Wicks, my name's Tracy Anderson. I'm fairly new to the board, and I don't think we've had opportunity to meet.
First of all, my name's Al. Okay, so feel free.
All right, thanks, Al. First, I wanted to ask, is there funding or grant funding for this as a long-term project? Or are you, do you have those funds available?
The answer is yes. There's a couple of sources. One is I would like to encourage all the counties to establish, and I'll be happy to assist, is to submit for funding through Richmond. And I've worked with some of the people at Radford. That is a pretty straightforward thing to do. TORC Robotics has set up a foundation, it's called the Self-Driving Institute, and we have significant funds available. And the goal and the mission of this foundation is to support education.
Okay.
So I am not suggesting remotely that we're going to add to the school budgets. Okay, they're strapped enough. This is something that we can do on the cheap and give the students what I would call an enhanced experience, hands-on.
Right. Well, I think your presentation's exciting, to have these opportunities for young people. I like, I like the thought process that you've presented. Is this limited to the Baywood school only, or is this something you could, if there's some delay in that, are you going to be able to do this maybe through our K-Center or through the Crossroads Institute? Is this only limited to that facility?
No, no, no. The facility that we talked about, that I've talked about with some of the county supervisors is simply a focal point. It is a place where you're guaranteed high-speed internet, where you're guaranteed good acoustics, so that we can interact using the screens and things like that. Hardware will be available, but no, it is, I will go to any high school, I will go to Crossroads. That's, that I think is the least, Baywood is an example, not the only game in town.
Okay. And my, another question I have, do you consider this a regional plan? That you mentioned Radford Schools and Galax and Carroll, is this more of a regional idea for high schools in Region Seven?
Well, let me say, you know, I would love to do it naturally. I mean, there's plenty of rural schools that need support. I think if I can make an impact on southwest Virginia, I would be a happy camper. I just want to make sure that all the kids in what I consider Appalachia, the farm kids like me that I grew up with, have an opportunity. Again, they can stay on the farm as they want, but I want them, let me give you an anecdotal story. And this is really what has fired my passions on this. I was talking to the STEM teacher, I won't name the county, and it was local. I mean, this is Region Seven. This is not, this is not someplace southwest or anything like that. This is local. And we were discussing what was going on, and she said, "Well, we've decided that we're not going to teach physics this year." I, you know, after they picked me off the floor, I said, "How can any of your students go to an engineering school if you don't teach physics?" And she said, "Well, geez, no, there wasn't any interest." I, you know, I have all sorts of respect for these teachers, and I know that they're overworked, but when you tell me they don't have any interest, that, that means they're either bad teachers. Physics is the most interesting topic, that it explains how things work. I mean, what more can you ask for? So that was the real motivation. And I agree, not that physics isn't for everybody, but at least you've got to be exposed to it, so that you have the opportunity to say, "No, I don't like it."
Right. Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that story. You said you've been working on this for three years. Like I said, I'm fairly new to the board and doing research on what's going on here. Due to planning and different unforeseen issues I know that's come up with the overall Baywood project, have we lost out on any opportunities in the last three years or funding because of the delays or planning issues?
Well, not from my point of view. I'm a, right now, I'm a one-man show, and I'm teaching full-time, I have my research going on. Starting in September, I'm going to halftime, because this is becoming more and more important. So it is only what I can do with a few volunteers and some of my students that are interested. I think you're going to find that there are a number of these university students. I, you know, I'm from Virginia Tech, so it's, you know, it's a little bit different. The, these kids will invest in young people, and that's exactly what I want them, I would love to see them graduate out of Virginia Tech with their engineering degree and also be involved in community service. You know, to participate in the community, to have an interest, and that's something that I would like to instill and enhance as much as possible. But to be more direct, I don't mean to sound like a politician, be more direct to answer your question. Baywood is a resource for Grayson County, and the sooner you can stand it up, the better off Grayson County's going to be. We just went through COVID, and there's been all sorts of studies about the impact that not having face-to-face learning has had on our students. Some projections I've heard is that they've lost up to a year because of this in their educational experience. I take, I don't deny that, I'm not a researcher in that particular area, but I do know that having students involved, having, just like you and I are talking this evening, with quality interfaces and the high-speed internet, it may not be as good as looking face-to-face, but I can make it damn close, where I can communicate and do examples, provide hands-on experiences that can be done via Zoom, and save some travel. It's an hour and a half to get down to, down to Grayson County. That's three hours both ways. That's, you know, I can do a lot on Zoom. I prefer working with the students. One of the things that I've talked with Bill about is to do a little GPS experiment, lay out a football field or a soccer field at Baywood. Have the students go out, I've got GPS units that will, I can tell you where you are within a couple centimeters on earth, and to have them literally lay out soccer fields, contribute to Baywood by doing something like that. And it's a tremendous learning experience for these kids. They actually have to do something. It's one thing to sit in school and watch, the analogy that I use is, I can show you how to kick a soccer ball. I can, you can watch a video on it. You can actually go out and try it once, but if you want to play World Cup soccer, you probably should kick the ball warm once. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and a lot of practice, repeating the same stuff, and giving the hands-on experience. And that's, that is what my practice delivers.
Well, I appreciate your passion for the kids in Appalachia and Region Seven. I would like to point out, we were one of the few, if not the only, school that did not close during the pandemic, and we provided face-to-face learning all throughout. I think that's something that I personally am proud of for our school system. And I hope that we can find a way to put your ideas to work and move it forward and create these opportunities, and I thank you for the presentation.
But it's certainly my privilege to speak with you, and that I work, I've worked with Bill, and I hope that we can work together in the future. I think this is a fun thing to do, and I will say very honestly, Grayson County is taking the lead on this, and I am proud to work with you guys. I think you've taken this on, and I think you're going to lead the way for a lot of these rural counties, not only for your students, but to be able to retain your students, to be able to create the educational environment that people want to have, that they want to move to Grayson County. They need to have good high schools, they need to have good schools and educational opportunities.
Anyone else? We start with thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you very much, Al.
All right, can I get back to grading now?
Yeah, that sounds fun.
You're welcome to stick around the meeting, though.
We appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay.
Have a great.
Thank you, too. Next, we have on the agenda, Mr. Tyler Atkins, K-Center. We'll go ahead and move forward. If he turns out to be here, then we'll come back to him. Next was Stacy Reeves, Grayson County Register's Electoral Official Update.
I'm throwing my pen, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm glad I didn't hit you. Sorry, I've sat there for a while, so I'm still, my bacteria's running here. This is just an update. We've been talking about election official recruitment, so it's just an update on where we are from the last time we met. The last time that I was present at one of your meetings, or even my board members were present, was at the April 19th, your Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop Meeting. And you all had asked that, getting the information on like first precinct, how many individuals we needed to be able to be fully staffed and have extra coverage, that sort of thing. And I sent an email out to Mr. Shephley, and that got forwarded to everybody, I guess, so you've got those numbers and an idea where we're at. I also emailed each of our party chairs, just with some officer of election recruitment considerations, and when they're having meetings, you know, getting together out with the community or whatever, if they can, you know, spread that word as well. I got this, I didn't write his name down, I believe it is Mr. Mahner, one of the teachers at the high school, and got packets to them for voter registration, as well as officer of election recruitment. Did individual packets for the students to take that had resource information, as well as voter registration applications and steps to take if they're interested in serving as an officer of election. He's been getting forms back to me, the voter registration forms, so he's been, he's been really good to work with. He's bringing those in as the students get them completed, he's got extra copies for folks that want, maybe at school today, they gave them out initially, or they're hearing from their friends or whatnot. So he's been really good to work with on doing that. In doing all of these things, I have sent out 10 packets, and by that I mean our paperwork, payroll paperwork, things that we give to anybody who's looking to sign up. And I've sent those out because I've either gotten an email, or I've had a phone message, or I've heard from somebody that this individual's interested, so I'm putting a cover letter with it explaining what it is, kind of what the duties and responsibilities would be, how it would work, and asking with those packets to come back in. Total, since the 19th, Total since the 19th, um, April 19th meeting, I've sent out 10 packets or I've either hand delivered to somebody in the office. And of those 10, as of today, I have two of those back. So I have folks that have said, yes, I want to do it and I'll get to that packet and I'll call you when you come in and finish it up because there's a portion of it that they have to be face-to-face with us to do. So I'm, I'm waiting on the 8th. I don't have anything from yet. The ones that did sign up, we've got one new person for Battle Creek and one new person for Indian Heights for those two polling places. And that, that's kind of where we're at. We have had some progress and some interest. And I guess a lot of that, the majority is kind of in the, the middle of the process, but only two have fully completed the process. So I'm hoping to get, you know, others back and then just some other names, some other interests. Of the 10 packets that we sent out, two of those that expressed interest, two that we sent out were to, to high school centers. So we have a couple of those that have expressed some interest. So I'm hoping to get something back on that.
Great.
But we'll, you know, we'll just keep, you know, doing what we have been doing as far as sharing that information, making it available by whatever resource, you know, we can come up with to do so. If you have any questions, any suggestions, anything like that, we're open to whatever.
Mr. Bill has a question.
I think one of the requirements is go to Richmond for a class. Great.
No, they don't have to go to Richmond.
They don't?
No, no, we do training sessions here, um, before every single election that we have. Our officers get trained.
Okay. I was mistaken. I thought the class was in Richmond and not.
We go to Richmond. The board members and myself, we, we spend, you know, we're either in Richmond or we're in Williamsburg or we're in Abington or we're, you know, wherever they set things up for us. But now to be an officer of election, you don't have to travel like that.
Okay.
God forbid all of them have to pile in Richmond. That would be a tremendous deterrent.
I'd go in Richmond.
Oh, yeah. No, that, no, none of those folks have to go to Richmond. So, no.
Is there a, um, like if someone volunteers or signs up, wants to be an officer of election, can they work outside of their precinct or their district? Is that an option?
Yeah. We, we try to plug folks in to, like if you live in the Elk Creek area, we try to work you at the Elk Creek just because it's closer, it's less mileage for you to have to get to a polling place at five o'clock in the morning and less mileage for you to have to go home after a 15, 16, whatever hour day. So we try to keep you in your home precinct. But I mean, if you want to move out, you want to be somewhere besides that home precinct, we don't, you know, I don't have very many people that live in Fairview wanting to drive to Mount Rogers. You know, if that's, if they want to work outside, then we, we don't object to that.
Is it, is it a conflict for us or any elected official to have relatives working the polls?
No. To be an officer of election, you can't be an elected official yourself and you can't work for, you know, be the deputy or the employee of an elected official. But being related to somebody doesn't make a difference.
If I had a wife, could she work the poll?
She could. When you're on the ballot, just for the sake of perception, we probably would not work her. But you go get her and she'll be safe.
I just wondered if there was some.
Yeah, there's not a restriction there. Perception i- is a big thing because people, you know, they get ideas about things. So like I said, for that, if your name were on the ballot, we probably would not work her in the, the area for folks to vote for you.
Very hypothetical.
From future rounds. Yeah. No, but there's not a restriction like that.
What's your next deadline? When, when is it you need to kind of have things set?
We still are in the throes of redistricting. That, as far as everything on our end, has not been completed because the June 21st primary for the areas that have elections on the 21st, that had congressional district changes, that is Richmond's priority right now.
Right.
So we're coming in to finish up all the redistricting from our end after that June 21st election.
Okay.
And I know you get tired of me hearing this. We are trying to, we would like to avoid voter confusion with multiple mailings and, um, just added expense because we keep hearing about paper shortages, envelope shortages, all of those things, ballot, you know, card stock shortages that are expected to last up through 2025. So we, we really need to know where we're at for November, June, July. And then that would give us time, if we are going to have to do something, that would give us time for, uh, public hearings, that sort of thing, get all the legal aspect of it, I think, taken care of so that we could hit it for the start of early voting in for November, which is going to be about mid-September.
Well, the, the question was not, I mean, we can't control the Attorney General or whatever.
Right, all of that, right.
So the question was really about the, the people you need to man the polls. When is it that you need them in order to hit the training windows required to get you ready for November?
If we're making absolutely no changes, then we will take people up until we do our training dates in November. And we try to hit those about two weeks before. We try to do training about two weeks before because it's fresh in your mind.
Right.
And because a lot of times it's a couple of weeks before, before the state hits all the final, everything that we need to do.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Good. Thanks.
Yeah. But now we're signing folks up anytime they want to do it. If they miss that opportunity, you know, we'll take them for the next one. So we won't tell anybody no.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as this chair, as far as pay and incentive that we talked about, is that we really address that in the budget session? We had mentioned that, I just wanted to make sure, before she left, if there was any suggestion or anything towards, we talked about increasing the pay or maybe adding an incentive. People sign up and they can get something, let's say, complete the training or, I mean, just some ideas you might present to.
Somebody had mentioned like a sign-on bonus or something, but the problem with that is you'll get them, they'll work one election, they won't work anymore because they got that extra money. So what we had been thinking is just where we pay somebody $150 for that day, up that to 175 or two, or what have you, just a flat rate and they get it for, for working, not just for signing up and starting for that year. And then the next year, we're kind of back to square one. Um, but now my board has, uh, my electoral board is meeting next week. And we, we can, I can add that to their agenda to talk about, you know, maybe come up with a number.
Yeah, I'd say we need it because we're heading into another budget work session here pretty soon and that needs to be plugged into our overall budget. So, yeah.
I think they're made on Tuesdays.
That initiative, I think that might help.
Okay.
But we need, we need the info.
Yeah. And Lisa's just reminded me, they added some money to that line item for us because that had been mentioned and it was a consideration. So we just didn't have a definite number like for a person.
24th, I believe, is it?
26th. Bad, bad information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rick Arrington, Grayson County Sheriff's Office Operational Study.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Good, good evening. Thank you, Al, for slicing out a little bit of time for us this evening. And thank you for requesting this operational study. I know the board last spring and county administration talked about this. Colonel Fant was instrumental in that. And we've learned a lot from the study. Uh, some of the things we've already implemented. It's always good to have a fresh set of eyes from the outside to look at operations and bring in new ideas. I think I'd be very satisfied with the study. But before I introduce our speaker, I want to recognize I did bring some backup with me this evening. So we have our chief deputy with us, Gary Hatch. He's got 32 years of experience. I think all of you probably know Gary. He's been around a long time. And our captain, Todd Perkins, also 32 years of experience. Our patrol lieutenant, Jody Poole, has 19 years of experience. And Patrol Sergeant Jordan Johnson with 10 years. And Patrol Sergeant Brad Hawks back there in the back with nine years. So we. All of our staff are very interested in this study. And before I introduce Rick, I want to tell you one quick story. Last week about one of our corporals that was on patrol down near Freeze. He got a call at three o'clock in the morning to a pregnant woman in distress. Uh, he responded, uh, just within minutes, uh, found the woman. The baby was already crying. Uh, he was able to deliver the baby, uh, clear the airway, uh, get him to breathing. Uh, he tended to the baby and mother until rescue could get there. He said it was the most stressful 23 years of his law enforcement career. And Corporal Jason Horner, he's apprehended drug dealers. He's got guns off of people, but this is the most stressful 23 minutes he's ever had. I know it took a little while for EMS to get there and he said it felt like ages, but he did a great job. He's been commended for that, but wanted to share that good news story with you. So, uh, Mr. Rick Arrington is here with us this evening. He's with the Crime Prevention Center for Training and Services. Uh, Mr. Arrington put a lot of work, a lot of extra work into this study and we'll let him dive into the details. So we appreciate him being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you all have received the report, uh, the read-ahead report, which is really good because I didn't realize this meeting was going to be this long. So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna, uh, I'm going to bring up the findings and try to save your time. And anytime you have questions, I'm happy to answer in de- in detail. But I've jotted out some notes and we'll go through the findings rather quickly. And then I will go to the, at the final end of this, a, uh, our recommendation on how to proceed. Uh, but the first findings that I, I would like to, uh, report is that Grayson County Sheriff's Office has done a phenomenal job with the people that they have. It's, it's amazing at what they're getting done with this, uh, the staff that they have. In other words, they do need more staff. But, uh, what, what I'm gonna focus on is a couple of things. You all know that we did, uh, an extensive amount of work with the data, but we also did an extensive amount of perception surveys with the citizens. I think it's very important, as you all have already demonstrated this evening, listening to the public about what their desires are. And that, what was very interesting is that the, the citizens of Grayson County gave realistic answers. They didn't try to go crazy and inflate, uh, their, what they expected of their sheriff's office. And what was also interesting is those things aligned perfectly with what the computations and the work, uh, that we did revealed. So for example, the first thing is the sheriff, uh, had a desired response for an emergency because of the size of the county of 20 minutes. But the perception surveys, uh, for the minimum acceptable time was 17 minutes. You can't get much closer than that. And that tells me that the citizens are realistic about the size of this county. The, uh, the geographic, uh, features that limit access, as you've heard about the roads and what have you tonight also. So we'll, we'll go forward. I'm just going to hit some of the key points here. One of the first point is, uh, we did a comparison with counties that are similar in, uh, to, uh, to Grayson. That is, they are, uh, rural counties. They have the same population. And what we discovered, uh, as far as what we will call road deputies, which are actually law enforcement, uh, Virginia treats their deputies differently if you're a jail, if you're a bailiff and so on. So what we're talking about is road deputies, those who actually patrol. And so what we've found is that Grayson has the fewest road deputies, uh, of those in, with a similar background situated and the second lowest salary. Now, um, most counties, as you are aware, uh, have to supplement the compensation of the deputies. The, uh, the compensation board tells how much they will give per deputy and most counties are supplementing it. Grayson County falls in the 18% range for that supplement. Whereas, uh, 20 localities compensate anywhere 50 and on up as far as percentage. There are some that don't supplement at all. So, uh, go on to the next slide, please. Some, one of the key findings here also was that the sheriff's office are losing people to other agencies that pay more. Compensation is not usually the main reason people get into this. You just heard, uh, the sheriff introduced people with 30 years, 10 years, nine years. It's not all about compensation, but it's about the idea of safety. It's about, uh, your job satisfaction, but compensation surely comes into play. And what we discovered is Virginia's salary through the comp board has, has stagnated and did not even keep up with, uh, inflation over the years. They generally gave a cost of living increase, which was smaller than the national average, and they only gave it about every other year. So that kind of threw everyone behind. And, um, if you'll, if you notice on the slide, uh, back up. If you'll notice that that orange in between is the minimum wage requirement for Virginia. The, uh, far right yellow is the starting salary of a Virginia State Trooper. And then the, uh, the blue is the, uh, the compensation board's starting salary. That's what they start, uh, deputies at. So what we've seen is this is, uh, is a mass exodus, uh, also from law enforcement in general, not because only of salary, but because of the defund the police movement, because of the, uh, people attacking law enforcement for doing their jobs. And so, and the Police Executive Research Forum reported an 18% resignation rate between 2019 and 2020, uh, increase, an 18% increase. And between 2019, 2020, a 45% increase in retirements, which, uh, which we've also seen reflected in Virginia. Now please, sir. So rather than beat this horse to death, it looks like the compensation board is going, is going to be addressing this, uh, through the governor's budget. That's, uh, the governor's budget has in it, and it does look promising, that they're going to make some sort of move. The Virginia House Appropriations Committee met in November of 2021. And what they, what they recommended, please, is two options. One is to increase the starting salary from the 35, 149 to 42 or to 44 starting salary. So, uh, you, you see a significant increase there, which will, uh, which will bring them, uh, bring them up to, so they'll be able to retain the people more. It costs, to hire and train, uh, a deputy, it costs somewhere between 5,500 to $7,000. And that doesn't include what it's going to cost, uh, for, you know, if you, if you have to re-outfit them, if, if there's not clothes and uniforms and things available already. Next slide, uh, next point, please. Uh, they also recommend that they would set a salary adjustment after 12 months back to 9.3%. Uh, that's where it was originally in 2016. They turned it and turned it down a notch to 4.5%. Uh, so this salary adjustment prevents what's known as compression in the, in the, uh, salary. So you don't have a guy that's been here forever and he's making the same thing as a guy you hired two weeks ago. Next slide, please. I'm going to just hit these, uh, findings real quickly because I'll address those, uh, more, more so later. But what I call systems are anything that, that the agency needs to function efficiently and, and, and provide the citizens what, what is expected. The first problem, of course, and I think you're very familiar with this, is digital connectivity. Uh, the officers have, uh, computers that they have in the cars. The software company that they've been, uh, dealing with and with, uh, they have their records management system, their computer-aided dispatch system, all comes through that same company. I had three or four phone calls myself with them trying to figure out ways that we could remedy this problem because the key here is to keep your deputies, limited as they are, in the field. They're doing no good if they have to leave, drive two hours and write a report or drive a, and be two hours writing a report. They should be able to draft that report from the field. The system is, uh, is created for that purpose, but the connectivity issue has to be remedied. I understand y'all are going to be hiring somebody, a new IT person, uh, before too long. And hopefully this will be a priority on their list. Um, the current CAD system and RMS system, uh, are not being used to their full potential. And what I mean by that is I'm very familiar with this particular company that, uh, that you all are using. And their capabilities are, are, are much more robust. using, and their capabilities are much more robust than are being used. And the primary reason is because of a lack of training in how to use that. I identified some training and already gave that to the sheriff's office that they are going to be providing, or were providing, in Montgomery County for free for their, for their, their people that they are vendors to. And also, they have some online training that they can assist with. So, I've already provided that, and hopefully, the usefulness of that is it provides the ability to analyze the data in-house so that with limited resources, you can reallocate those resources to where they can be better used. Yes, sir.
So, how long have we had that system? Do you know?
Lisa, I think, was it the sheriff's office, so the software 2001?
Oh, at least, yeah, 2019.
Yeah, but we get updates on it every year.
And they did advise me that they're going to an update. One of the, one of the things that I discussed was being able to provide a sync antenna, basically, in different places in the county, so that you could be, you could drive under that, and you could, it would synchronize and it would upload immediately. The problem is you would have to do, you'd have to have a syncing laptop, which is a whole different laptop, and when I was discussing that with them, and they said their upgrade that's coming up will remove the ability for them to do that syncing. So, it was there, but now it's not.
So, we've had a system for 21 years, but it's still relevant? I mean, you know, that's pretty ancient technology, but I guess they've upgraded it over time, and so, it's really, we're buying a service, not necessarily the hardware. The hardware keeps changing, but the service is worth keeping.
Oh, yeah.
I will tell you, I was responsible for doing the purchasing of this very software and jurisdiction I worked in before. It was the best thing on the market. They are very customer-friendly.
So, if that's the case, then why is it that training is the issue? Because do they not come here and train us on every time it gets upgraded? Is that not part of the agreement?
I don't know what the agreement is with.
Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, but they will train, and they also have a users' conference that we can go to. Usually, two of us will go, not every year. But, yeah, I mean, it will do a lot of data and a lot of things that we're not utilizing on, as far as we're generating reports and looking at data and things of that nature.
But is that, I mean, is that just something that we just, you know, we learn by doing these studies and recognize? Is that just something we schedule with the company to get that training done? Is that all it is?
Yeah, well, we didn't that year.
And a lot of, I should say, a lot of the issues with this is that an agency that doesn't use that capability frequently tends to lose that knowledge.
Totally understand. Yeah. Okay.
Next. There was a lack of policy and protocol, which resulted in dispatchers assuming some of the decision-making role that they shouldn't necessarily be responsible for. So, they would decide a call-in, call-out, who's sent, et cetera. I think a lot of that comes from the fact that the staff, the supervisors that are working on the shift are more or less having to answer calls as well because the staff is not sufficient for them to adequately supervise, and I'll cover that more later. The field patrol deputies are being taken out of the field to handle certain tasks that other people may accomplish. I'll cover all of this in the recommendations. Next, please. And the prisoner holding for regional jail pickup is very extensive in time. It was not originally that way, but as I understand it, they're having, the regional jail was having the same situation as everyone else, trying to keep people staffed and keep them here. So, that results in somebody having to wait with the prisoner. You can't just put them in a cell and walk away. And the current scheduling doesn't really meet the needs based on what the cost of service data and the CAD data all tell us, and I'll show you more on that shortly. So, the weaknesses with the patrol staff, I looked specifically at patrol staff, and the weakness is the minimal patrol staffing creates a really, a vicarious liability issue for the supervisor who's not supervising. The supervisor is running calls, so they're not necessarily able to adequately supervise. And of course, vicariously, that means that the lieutenant, the captain, the major, the sheriff, all the way up through the county manager and so on, is potentially responsible for any liable liability from failing to supervise. The current calls data, most of the patrol time is spent. When we looked at that data, we broke it down, I looked at all of the calls, and most of the time is in either Galax Independence or the Freeze Addresses, which, before anyone thinks anything about that, makes sense because those are your population hubs, and therefore, you're going to have more calls in the populated areas. There is a potential for 22 days off per patrol deputy for their vacation, their training, et cetera, because they are statutorily mandated to receive certain amount of vacation days, certain amount of holiday. They're required every two years to receive 40 hours of in-service training, which, if you break that down annually, that's 20 hours. You put all of that in together, and you're taking the number of deputies you have, and you're already pulling them off by these mandates. Next, please. The barest minimum staffing that, that, or is available, I should say, is indicated immediately is for the county to hire two additional deputies. That's the barest minimum. Next. For adequate coverage, and I'll explain how this works later, but the adequate coverage to cover and meet the response timed expectation of the citizens and the sheriff to meet the other expectations is to increase by five deputies. And obviously, that, these things take time because you don't hire a deputy, train him one week, and put him out on the street. So, there's an extensive period of time for training that's involved also. Also, I mentioned this already, but violence against law enforcement has been on the increase, and as you can see, FOP reported in 2021 ambushes were up by 91%. Law enforcement is, officers killed, didn't have the opportunity, this is about half of them, didn't have the opportunity to even engage their assailant. The point behind this is it emphasizes the need for available backup. And when you have a minimum number of people, that backup is not necessarily there. One of the things we heard from some of the citizens were, in the perception, was that we don't, we don't get to see the deputies as much as we want, or we live out in this area, and we don't see them at all. And when you see, when you hear that, what that indicates is these deputies, and this was confirmed, the deputies are basically trying to run with each other to provide that backup for these more serious calls.
Can we, if I may, the, I mean, the person that goes on the offense always has the initiative, right?
Yes, sir.
And so, in this case, how does the backup, unless the backup, unless every patrol is got two people going responding to every incident, how does the backup in our situation, what does that look like? Does that make sense? What I'm trying to get my head around is, you know, we've got individual deputies that are out there responding.
Yes.
You know, they're flying solo, right? But the backup, even under the future recommendation with five deputies, that backup is in-zone, but not necessarily in-location.
Correct.
So, how does, how does not having a backup, even though the backup may be in-zone, how does that help us with this issue of they don't have a chance to respond because the assailant took the initiative? Does that make sense?
Well, it does. What you're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if half the officers didn't have the opportunity to engage your assailant, I was having the backup in the zone 20 minutes away going to help?
Right.
And the answer is it's not, but it will help in those situations where the officers were killed in the line of duty, and it will help us to solve the crime. It will help us to make that arrest. The quicker we arrive on the scene, it will help to save that officer's life, who may be bleeding out without anybody helping.
Okay, I get it now. Thanks.
Next, please. The Virginia model, the Virginia, and I'm assuming you all know this, but I don't know that you do, so I'm gonna just mention it. The Virginia model has always, everyone has always understood it to be, you get one deputy per 1,500 populous. That's what the comp board pays for. Now, of course, the localities can pay for whatever they want. The International Association of Chiefs of Police, I'm a member of that association among their Crime Prevention Committee, they are the premier organization for law enforcement in the world. And the International Association of Chiefs of Police, many years ago, advised against using the per capita model of one to whatever population. However, they said when you do use that population, it should be one to 1,000. Yet, Virginia uses the one to 1,500 population. Next slide, please. So, the comp board takes that simple per capita, perhaps it's because it's easier, I don't know exactly why, but there are two methods of funding, there's one state, but there's two methods of funding law enforcement. Deputy sheriffs, who are law enforcement, patrol, are funded using their, the comp board per capita model. But police departments, they use state aid to localities with police departments, which was commonly referred to as 599 funds. That's based on the code or the bill when it was originally a passed. It had the number 599, and they've since called it that. If you look at, Virginia has 2.5 police officers, not deputies, per 1,000 population. Now, here's the, here's the problem. There's 175 law enforcement agencies that are police departments that are funded using 599 versus the comp model. Now, obviously, we can't change what they do in Richmond, but 599 is not a simple mathematical, you've got X amount of population, so we'll give you one per 1,500. Instead, what they do is they take a distribution formula, which includes factors such as the number of people who are on temporary assistance for needy families, foster care, the median income, all of the things that I believe Grayson County would benefit from if they were able to use the distribution formula as opposed to the simple per capita. Next slide, please.
May I ask you on that point?
Yes, sir.
So, it sounds like from a manning standpoint, I get the ratio is not great, but supervisor Ash and I were chatting earlier today, is there a way, given the remoteness, I mean, 450 square miles been that way since Grayson County was created, right? But we have less people now than we had, you know, 20 years ago.
Yes.
But our demand, our geography that we got to cover hasn't changed.
Correct.
Is there a way to influence the comp board other than through population? I mean, is there a way to say, hey, you know what, our circumstance here in Grayson County is different, and we need more people?
There is, in the, in the recommendations, I will cover that, but it's actually covered statutorily, although it's hidden. You have to dig it out to see it, but it's there. So, bear with me.
You need to jump ahead.
No, it's quite all right. So, this is an example of state aid. So, local area here, you take Abingdon, that has a population of 7,933, yet they have 24 officers because they are funded through 599 money. If you went down that list, what it would be using comp board computation, they would have five, four, 3.7, and five, as opposed to what you see there. So, you see what we're up against. Independence would have one officer if they used this funding method. Next, please. The Bureau of Justice Statistics did a, some work back in 2004. Now, I know this is dated, but I use dated, this dated research for a reason, because it will give us the most conservative numbers that we need. And their conservative numbers, going back to 2004, the lowest amount of officers per 1,000 should have been 1.8. Next point. If it's 1.8 officers per 1,000, that means Grayson County should have a minimum of 17 law enforcement patrol deputies rather than the 12 that they currently have. And that's just using their per capita method. Now, next point, please, on top of that. No, back, next slide, and then hit it once more. There you go. This perception survey, this came from your citizens. The average number of deputies that citizens think should patrol the county was 18. What that slide before showed, that using that 1.8 per capita, per 1,000, would give you 70. So, it's very close to what they think. The average number of deputies that respondents thought actually patrolled the county was eight. Next point, and, but almost 70% said there were too few. And I think everyone would agree, that's going to be the answer anywhere I've ever been doing this kind of work. If you go there, they're going to say there's too few. That's just a fact. If you look at the comparison I did, now, this is using the per capita method and the 1,500 population that state uses. Hanover County has 772 square, 472 square miles versus the 442 or so that Grayson County has. So, they're very close in size. However, Hanover County has 110,000 population. The comp board funds 73 deputies for Hanover County's 400-plus square miles versus what is covering Grayson County's, not to mention, they supplement. Hanover County, with that same 470 square miles, has 170 deputies on the road versus 12. So, you see, to me, what I'm trying to explain here is what you already know. There are more factors that should be looked at than your simple population, and this has to be done at Richmond. Next point. What we did was a workload approach. We looked at the workload of your deputies and evaluated the workload, not just the population, to see what is actually needed. And when you did that, we looked at the call distribution, when they, when the calls came in, the time, the date, the day of week, the month, et cetera. We looked at the time that officers spent on calls. We looked at the shift relief factor, which is how many deputies it takes to fill those positions, and then we come up with the estimated needs. Let's go to the next slide, please. These are all the things we looked at. I'm not going to read down that list, but those are all the things we did while we were here. We did some site tours throughout the county, and I was amazed. It took me about an hour and 15 minutes to get from one end of the county to the other end of the county, and that, that, from a guy who retired from Roanoke City Police Department, where I could be anywhere in the city, and we got complained on if we didn't respond in three minutes. That was amazing. Uh, that was amazing to me. Uh, so, you know, I was very, I was very impressed. Some of the data we used, I just wanna show you on the chart, some of the things that we see. For example, you see in October, you see July, March, uh, and in May, the calls go, uh, go up during those months. What that tells us is something's going on during those months. It's clear that that's where you need to plan around what's going on. Of course, the leaves are changing, people are out in the parkway in October, the trees are being, uh, processed and cut, the H2A workers are here, not that they're bad people, but they still swell the population. When they swell the population, you have more interaction and therefore your calls go up. Likewise, during these March, July, those are your tourism, uh, months, and so your calls go up during those months. Next, please. Uh, some of the data, again, these are, this is the breakdown, call for service from the CAD system, the CAD being Computer Aided Dispatch System, and it shows that Galax Addresses had the most calls, then Independence, then Freeze, then something not named, we couldn't figure out what that one was, but then Mouth, uh, Mouth Wilson, Elk Creek, White Top, Troutdale, and further down. So it went in that order. All right, next, please. These are some of, again, kinda substantiates what we were thinking if you look at the month at the top in yellow, broken down by the calls. Next slide, please. And during the 24-hour period, what we looked at was when are the calls coming in? And as you would suspect, 8:00 to about, really 10:00 at night is the busiest time. Uh, obviously, 8:00 in the morning, people wake up, that's when they walk out and they find out that the car's been broken into. So they're gonna call, not necessarily if the thing happened then, but that's when they would call. But the primary times for calls, you will see there's these lulls in there. Those lulls are accounted for because of that's when people are at lunch, that's when people are eating dinner. So those, those lulls, that's what you're seeing with that 1,400 to, uh, you know, to 1,800, uh, kinda lull and so forth. Next, please. Interesting. Thursday was the, had the highest call, or it would appear. But what, what actually, you have to dig down deeper, that's why we had to spend so much time in this data, and, uh, when we spent that time in the data, we found what's happening is these deputies are working harder on those Thursdays. That means they are self-initiating more, uh, rather than the calls being dispatched. So that's why that number is higher on Thursday. I don't know why. I can't explain to you why they're doing it unless you're just leaning into the weekend, but they do. All right? And, um, the most serious calls occur, as intuitively everybody knows, including during the, during the interviews, we asked this question, when do you think, uh, more patrols would be appropriate? And almost everybody said the weekend, Friday, Saturday night. Everybody intuitively knows that's a dangerous time, and it is so. Domestic disturbance is one of the most dangerous calls a police officer can answer, and that's when those are, that, those are highest in Grayson County. That's when those backups are important, uh, when you're going on that call, knowing that those calls can turn on the dime. Next, please. Now, we broke this down, I won't go down everything, but we broke down all of what deputies do on a, uh, pulling up, pulling it off of the data, mind you, not, not just asking questions. And in minutes, so that we could get a good picture of what a 12-hour shift looks like. Of 12 hours, deputies are, are busy 9.4 hours of that, meaning they have, that's, that's their busy time, that, that's not really downtime. The sheriff has set a goal, an appropriate goal, uh, of a third of their time, four hours for community engagement, because it's, it's critical that people know their sheriff's office. That's where the trust builds, that's where we avoid these problems that we are seeing in the media all the time. And so he, uh, he appropriately set that, uh, four hours. I don't know, uh, why, I didn't ask him why, I just asked him what his goal was, which the International Association Chiefs of Police say that we should set, we should divide the day out by a thirds. One-third is answering call, one-third is administrative type of work, and then one-third is community engagement. So it, it kinda worked out that way. In actuality, they had two and a half hours to do that kinda work in, rather than the four that they need. All right, next slide, I'm sorry. This is a breakdown of the time that's been used by deputies. This is where, where the rubber meets the road. Because, uh, of all of the time that they have to use, and there is a minimum, the minimum staffing of three, uh, for a, for a 12-hour shift, that means that the, all of this holiday leave that they accumulate, this vacation leave they accumulate, uh, and the training, all of these things that take off, the, the, uh, take off of their hours, it amounts to about 10 days annually, uh, that, that they are not going to be, one, one deputy will get 10 additional days that he'll actually be off. Not off-duty as in a rest day, but off-duty when he should have been working, scheduled. So that actually limits their schedule even further. And when you get a mental health call, which is another thing that we saw, mental health calls, that is where you pick someone up on a temporary, uh, uh, order or a, uh, or where they have to actually take them, uh, to a facility. It resulted in 37 hours of overtime pain. In addition, um, each one of those calls averaged out to about 12 to 14 hours babysitting somebody. I hate to use the term babysitting, but that, you, you get what I'm saying. Sending with them, waiting, uh, for them to process in. So those calls all are detracting from the time, which causes, next problem.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes. Go back, please.
Those, those mental health calls, what was some of the distances that the deputies had to go as far as transporting, was out of area?
Oh, they get, they, the, the distance is based on where there's an available bed. I hate to put, and make go as far, what's the further?
We just went to Newport News two days ago.
And, and was there one deputy that went, or did we have to send two?
Send two.
Okay. I, I didn't know if you had that in there.
Yeah.
I'm fairly familiar with that process.
That, that distance, and that, and of course, this is all a result of, uh, some of closing down some of the facilities as well.
Right.
But earlier you mentioned about sworn versus non-sworn.
Yes.
To do that type of work, does that require sworn deputies? Or could that transport be done by non-sworn?
It could be done by, uh, it could be done by a jail-trained deputy. Am I incorrect?
Yeah, it's an eight-week school for correctional officers that goes over the rules for transporting, self-defense and all that.
But how would that affect what the recommendation is for your patrol, which sounds like where your issue is, right? Is that?
Does it? It, I looked at the, tangentially, I looked at the other deputies that he had, and they were adequate, but there, there's no, there's no room for movement there either.
So I guess my question is, is that additional, in order to keep patrol on patrol, is this requirement for transport and additional personnel required?
What we've been doing here recently is calling a deputy that's off-duty and paying them overtime to come in and supplement the patrol, instead of taking your actual patrol deputies off of the, off the road.
Right.
We're having to pay overtime to do these long transports.
Would you kick, would you stick to that model if, if you had additional deputies, or would you do something different?
If we had additional deputies and we still had the minimum of three or four on the road, we could send, uh, one of those on the transport. You know, if it's a lengthy transport, you have to send two.
Right.
Yep.
All right, so the, the problem that, that leads to is because of all of this time that they're accumulating, vacation time and whatnot, they can't take the time because the minimum staffing is three, and they're, 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 they have this other mandate that, training and what have you. So it results in the use of comp time, and their compensatory time, uh, is, is significant. And, uh, the, uh, the Labor Board requires that this time has to, you can only carry up to 171 hours, and after that, you either have to pay them overtime, which is gonna cost the county, or you have to give them time and a half comp time, which is going to dig the hole deeper. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't relieve any of the pressure, it actually digs it deeper. So as a result, a lot of the deputies currently, not a lot, but significant amount of them on patrol currently are carrying more than the authorized accumulated vacation times, and they stand to lose it because they're not being able to use it, even though it was not because of their own fault. So, uh, you look at the comp time here, uh, as of April 12th, when I was here the last time, uh, the patrol deputies had a total of 183 hours of comp time that needed to be taken off the books. So what I recommend is first off, that use the SROs during the summer months, when you free these SROs out of the school, to reduce that comp time, reduce that, and, and those officers that had vacation, that they stand to lose, get that off the books. Force them to take it off the books, even if they just stay at home and mow their yard or whatever they wanna do. Because you can't, you know, you don't wanna penalize them, obviously, uh, for something they had no control over.
Sheriff, may I ask, do you know how much you spent last year on overtime back, just roughly?
No, not, not right off, because we have overtime through DMV and different sources of, of overtime on.
Uh, so anyway, comp time is a real problem, and, uh, I, the, the recommendation, if fully implemented, I would, I would limit comp time to almost nonexistent. In other words, what I would say is, if you have the time, you need to put in the vacation time. Don't, don't try to depend on comp time. Next, please. Oh, oh, go back one, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
You're saying you recommended that if we're fully staffed with the five additional that you're talking about?
Yes, yeah. All right, next. Uh, the minimum staffing that the sheriff, uh, they'd set for, you can't, you, patrol in this entire county is three deputies for a 12-hour shift. Now, obviously, there are two shifts in a day. Uh, but it doesn't allow for proper supervision because one of those three is a supervisor. You, uh, when you use the, the shift relief factor calculation, which are in the, uh, in the full report, it comes down to 6.19 deputies per day that's needed. Currently, what you have on, you have a Patrol A and a Patrol B. Each of the Patrol A covers a day and a night shift, 12-hour day, 12-hour night shift, and then Patrol B is the relief to them. So what you currently have is you have five on one, six on another. So this amounts to seven per. That's where the two came from, that we, uh, minimum recommendation of two increase. Next, please. So the, the three, you're five and you, you had five and six, uh, I'm sorry, it, it came down to three, but there's one already in the academy. The sheriff had been, uh, utilizing that one as an animal control officer, and he's now in the academy. So instead of hiring three, the minimum that you would need to hire is two. Again, that's what I just said, the one is in the academy. Now, what I recommend is a phased approach. Obviously, having worked in, in government for, or as they said, my daughter says, having drank from the government trough my entire life, uh, I understand that the budget, there's only so much money and everybody wants their piece of it. So I'm recommending a phased approach. The first phase is to fix the connectivity issue that we talked about. Next, uh, point. Identify a solution for dealing with that transport issue of, uh, of at being, holding a prisoner. One of the things I talked to, uh, to the sheriff about, and I'll just throw this out as an example of getting creative, I contacted, uh, City of Galax, and I asked them, how do they handle their prisoners when they're in holding? And their dispatcher checks in on them every 30 minutes, which is basically required. Uh, but the officer puts them in the holding cell and leaves. So they ask somebody there, of course, they have a number of dispatchers that can do that, can leave, whereas, uh, Grayson doesn't have that. But there may be a way to contract with Galax to do that, uh, to, for them to, uh, use the, their holding cell and do that for, uh, Grayson as well. The other thing is to, uh, alter, uh, alter the work schedules, hire those two people, and then a civilian, non-law enforcement staff member to be animal control. There is no requirement that animal control officers be a sworn, excuse me, a sworn position. Since they're not a sworn position, they can be paid at a less, uh, less rate, uh, for handling the duties that they would handle. And, uh, as them being a non-sworn, uh, what, what I would recommend, which I'll get to in just a minute, is that they wear, uh, a different uniform, uh, so that people don't believe that they are a deputy and then create a problem for them. But anyway, and the other part is a part-time civilian, and I'll explain this, uh, as we go through it, but this is your least expensive alternative, uh, to, to achieving some success. Next point. Phase one would, uh, what this would do is those three deputies, after they come out of the academy, now we're talking months, four months or so, before they get out of the academy, but after they're out of the academy, um, then you can use a zone method, dividing, uh, the county as I've divided it here, or any way that you wish. But the reason I divided it this way is because those points in yellow that you see on that map are your populated areas. Galax, Trout, Troutdale, and, uh, Independence and Freeze, those are your most populated areas. So you're equally dividing this. If you have those, those guys on the ship, uh, and then you had a, a sergeant also who could be roaming, the sergeant can, uh, can then also, uh, drop in, back up, et cetera, and make some, uh, make some actual calls as far as super, supervision calls, such as, okay, whoever's working Zone Two, you roll over and grab whatever's going on in Zone One. When you have those new, new officers come out of the academy, they're not finished yet, they still have to have many hours of field training officers, uh, training. So if you had that supervisor, you would put them centrally located, maybe in the number two spot here, and assign that officer there so that that supervisor can make sure that they're trained appropriately. Next slide, please. And then hiring that non-animal control, like I said, that's not paid, that's not a comp-funded position. So you, it would have to be paid out of the budget, uh, for Grayson County, which is why I said a non-sworn position is, is obviously your better option. Um, point, please. There you go. Thank you. We looked at all of the calls in the CAD service, uh, in 2021, only 54 of the animal calls came in after 5:00. So obviously, this would, uh, this would determine the schedule for whoever this animal control person is, it's Monday through Friday, working the eight-hour shift. Next. The part-time clerk that we were talking about would be used, and this is, this has been done for years, and it's being done now more than ever because of staff shortages in law enforcement, to create a part-time, non-sworn telereporting clerk. So they're, they have specific, uh, roles, one being they're trained to take certain types of report. Person calls and says, hey, someone threw a rock through my window, uh, a truck was going down a road, threw a rock through my window. down a road, threw a rock through my window. We don't need to dispatch an officer all the way out to Troutdale to take that report, when we have this tele clerk here who can take the report over the phone, it covers their insurance need of a report, and, and then we, we keep our deputies, our law enforcement deputies in the field. They can also be trained to fingerprint non-arrestees. All of these things I'm talking about are things that right now, they're calling deputies, you have three deputies in the field, and they're calling one in to do. You need to come in and arrest, I mean, and fingerprint Joe Blow because he's applied for a federal job, and they need his fingerprints. So this person could do non-arrestees. The arrestees are a court order that, you know, the bailiffs could do those, they're already there. Magistrate video introductions. The magistrate no longer are located, staying here or being here very often, so there, the deputies have to be called in to do a video introduction of the citizen to the magistrate, so that they can obtain a warrant. Well, what we found in this data, point, please, is that 109 times deputies were dispatched from the field during 2021, just to do that introduction. And when they're in, and they are, they have to set it all up and do everything. So of those, 52 of those were between the hours of one and six. They were dispatched through CAD. Now, there were a whole lot more of them where, during the daylight hours, you know, Captain Perkins or somebody else was there, and they just did it, and there was no dispatch involved. But when you dispatch, they, that tells us that was 109 times they pulled them in from the field to do this introduction. And the part-time clerk hours that are indicated are one to six for maybe four days a week, so people know if you need to obtain a warrant, you know, it's during these four days, unless it's an emergency, and then, of course, you know, you have to do it on Friday, Saturday, or whatever. And of course, that's, that's, you can alter that as you see it needed. The dispatchers also, this was the one point I made earlier, a policy needs to be drafted to guide the dispatchers on when to tell, telereport, when to send the call over to the telereport person versus sending, just sending someone in. The supervisors need to be able to supervise and make that call. They, they've been to the law enforcement training, they know what calls are more serious and which ones can hold, and they should be making those, those calls. So dispatchers need a guide, and that's one of the things that can be immediately done through a policy. Next point, please. Again, the goal is to keep them in the field. Here's the altered schedule that we talked about. Patrol lieutenant schedule would be flexible, and this is one of the most important, and it costs nothing, really, for you all, and this will already help. And if you take the, the patrol lieutenant, alter their schedule so that they work a Friday, Saturday night, one per month, and they can choose those hours, that allows them to properly supervise the sergeant that they are responsible for, as well as fall in on calls as backup. Next point. The patrol sergeant schedule, currently, they, they are rotating with one half of their shift. So they, only time they see the other half of that shift is in, is in shift change, pass. So they don't actually, they're not actually able to supervise their work. This is where the liability concern comes in. So if the patrol sergeant's schedule could be altered, again, every third work rotation of their 12-hour shifts, they would work a evening from two to two, as opposed to, that way, they would be half with one shift and half with the other. Next point, please. And then crime suppression sergeant already works some crazy hours, but they, they set their own scheduled hours because of what they do, but we recommend that they pick one Friday and Saturday a month also. Next. And then three sergeants that are currently investigators, we would recommend a alternate schedule that they, one of them works every weekend, so you rotate every, you basically work one weekend out of, out of three, because there's three of them. So this is what it would look like. If you see the green, that's the lieutenant working at evening. And in the orange underneath that is the patrol sergeant. So you see, he's working at two to two, so he would actually be able to see both his night shift and day shift people. Where you see new deputy in red, those are the positions, there are three there, this is the, not the full five that I recommend as a fully staff, but three, one that's in the academy now, and two additional. So that would give you this, this schedule that we're looking at. So then you look at down below that, you're, you're in, in the kind of bright yellow, that's your investigators that are working the weekend, and they would work, they would not work a two to two, but they would work a evening. So they are, they become, in essence, a power shift. So during that busy time when those calls are coming in, then these guys are available for backup, not necessarily to answer calls, but backup. And also, as an investigator, one of the key things that we did as investigator, investigators is we have to interview people. And sometimes people work daylight hours, and you can't interview them if you work all daylight hours, it's ideal time. I made more cases when I was a detective, working weekends, than I ever did during the week. And if, you know, you, you can visit people's yard sales, flea markets, and recover stolen property, it's just a number of things you can do. But anyway, you see how this would supplement the shift even, even before you add the deputies? Okay, continue. And then, these are the three additional deputies, that's part of Phase Two. So part, Phase Two, you would hire the, the, you would have a total of five. You have one that's in the academy now, you hire two, and then the other three would give you that additional. So that would, that would create the adequate, so that you have the adequate number of people to allow somebody off, you have that floater in between, as well as a supervisor, and then you, if you keep that, that schedule, on weekends, you have a very well-protected shift. All right, here's the, the interesting part, I think that y'all are going to be most interested in, how do you pay for it? So this is some of the things that we looked at. First off, the town of Freeze is paying $36,000 when they had an agreement with the county some years ago, the county's agreement said $40,500. If the governor budget passes, and then, and they raise starting salary to $42,000 for a deputy, this would almost pay for one deputy by raising, by them paying that entire $4500. The town of Independence, essentially, they have six officers working the town of Independence, but nobody's working the night shift. Grayson is filling in that position, they're answering the calls, and as you saw, most of the calls come out of Galax, Independence, and Freeze addresses. So it would, it would be appropriate to ask them to foot the bill for a deputy. And then the cops hiring program, I talked to Mr. Shepley and Mr. Smith about this briefly on the phone. The cops hiring program, and it is rolling out in June, it is a grant program, it's basically, the best, the best way to explain it, it's a, it's a hire now, pay later, because what they do is they will fund the deputy for three years, and then you have to, you have to make some assurances that you retain that position for X amount of years. So it gives you some, some breathing room in those, those three years. And then, this is the part I was talking to you about, Mr. Fant, you asked this question earlier. If you look at the code section, everybody assumes that it says one deputy per 1,500, and that's how it's interpreted. But the code section says that the number of law enforcement deputies shall be fixed at not less than one per 1,500. And it suggests in the code that prior to the April 1st deadline that they have, that the county can request an adjustment to that number. And the, the adjustment that, that what I would suggest is you use those things that are part of the formula, that 599 funding for police departments. For example, talk about how many mountains this region, how it takes one, one hour 15 minutes to travel across the county, what the median income is in the county, you know, the, the roads, you have to cross rivers and streams and mountains and all of these sort of things. A package like that will mean something, rather than just going and saying, you know, we're, we don't have enough deputies, we need more. And that, that's what I would suggest would, would help to, to get additional deputies paid for through the comp. And that's about it. I've known it a long time, I'm sorry. I tried to go through it faster.
Kind of missed the window at this time, let me, okay, April 1st deadline?
Yeah, April 1st. But, you know, like I said, the, you have the data, and I would, I would not, if you all aren't opposed to it, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, using whatever you can out of that, out of that report. I'm hoping it would be helpful to you in that regard. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You know, we all want a premier law enforcement organization, and, you know, the first, first question prospective residents of Grayson County ask when they call here, I'll have them look and move into Grayson County, is it safe? You know, they'll ask about the school system, and they'll ask about the healthcare, but the number one thing they ask about is it's safe? And, and we do need additional deputies to do that. We're working toward being a certified crime prevention community, I think that's one thing that we actually put into the comprehensive plan. A few years ago, Captain Perkins just attended a class to be a certified crime prevention specialist, that's one of the things you have to do to get the certified crime prevention community designation. How nice would that be, to drive into Grayson County and see that sign up for our certified crime prevention community? That's, that's a goal of ours, and I think we're going to be able to reach that by the end of the year. In addition to that, we have to work toward accreditation within the next three years to get that designation as well, and Captain Perkins will be working on that, I hope to get that accreditation status as well. You know, we talked to Mr. Arrington at length, I, I like the funding of Plan B. We can use the phased approach to do that, by just hiring one additional deputy this year, and maybe one additional deputy next year. We will look into the grants, but we would ask the board to consider, at your next budget meeting, funding at least one more deputy position for this year. We have a great team, we have one of the best teams we've had at the sheriff's office. A lot of times, our staff members, they come in and they work sick, they're willing to work shorthanded, that they often do, with just two deputies working the county. I know Chief Deputy Hester remembers that very well, working the whole county by himself, and it puts our guys in a stressful position, it sets us all up for a lot of liability. So I would ask you to consider that at your next budget meeting. Thank you.
All right, we appreciate it very much, y'all being with us. Hang out to rest in line if you're able to.
You got a long drive. Thanks for all the time on the phone, I appreciate it, and answering, being patient, answering all the questions.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you.
I think we're going to go on recess for about five minutes, and we'll come back here about two. You good to go, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's about five after, we're going to call our meeting back to order. Our agenda, we have our old business nun, we're scheduled to have a proclamation to be presented to the Department of National Emergency Medical Services, but I understand that...
Yes, so there's a family emergency, so Mr. Parker could not be here to receive that?
Okay, so we might pass on that?
We could present that at the next commission meeting.
Do you want to go ahead and perk it then, and just give the end of the... Okay, if that's... Yeah, since, I guess it's, since it's timely, so it'd be during this month, it's a month-long...
Yes, sir.
recognition, okay. That'd be fine, that'd be fine.
You entertain the motion?
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I make the motion, we approve the proper motion.
Okay. Hold, no discussion, hold, favor, signify with saying aye? Okay, next is a request approval to advertise for a public hearing for the FY 2022/23 budget on June the 9th of 2022.
Make your motion.
Okay, have a motion before the board, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ivey? Okay, any discussion? Hold, favor, signify with saying aye? Okay, which brings us to the county administrators' report. Wait, wait, board, board. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm trying.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, we're hoping that we could have 10 members of the EDA with, on speaking with, with our council, we realized we need to give, we have to go to seven. And so I'm going to let him explain to you...
If that's all right.
Yeah.
So Code of Virginia prescribes a set number of seats that can be on Industrial Development Authority or Economic Development Authority, and then it defaults to seven, and there's a carve-out for, for numerous, numerous localities that go as high as 11. Some, some counties can have 10, some 11, some nine, it's, it runs the gamut. But because Grayson County's not in one of those carve-outs, we are limited to seven physicians on the EDA board. So I, I think the action of the board to go to 10 at the last meeting needs to be rectified. Be my recommendation for the, the board to appoint seven members. The three remaining members, whoever you don't select, I would engage them, you've got someone who stepped forward to be involved in the county, I'd engage them to serve in other possible capacities as much as possible. Then the only other remaining issue, I think, with the, with the appointments is to determine the length of each term to be filled. You have two options there. One would be to go back and see, we're, we're appointing Mr. Smith for the term that expired on this date, and that will be, then they will carry over till 2026. Mr. Doe will be appointed to a term that would, to a term that would have expired had it been filled originally in 2023, et cetera. And if it's not, if it's too cumbersome to go through that process and allocate who will serve what, basically sit in what seat, so that you have staggered terms, because the, the code does require that you have staggered terms. You could simply advertise and adopt an ordinance saying this person will serve their initial term of one year, two years, three years, four years. But that's not an imperative that you need to reconstitute the EDA right now. I think right now, if you select seven members, they're in office, they can act, they can move forward with the EDA, and then sometime in the next meeting or two of the board supervisors, we'll want to nail down those terms. But for tonight's purposes, I think you just need to decide on the seven.
Well, it's my understanding that they all expired at the same time, so they were on, all the terms expired of the current seven at the same time.
And I think that's probably due to some, I think if you went back through the history, because if you look at the original ordinance, when the IDA was formed, it staggered terms and provided that the person who fills this seat will thereafter serve a four-year term. So there should have always been a four-year, there should have always been four-year terms... So there should have always been a four-year, there should have always been four-year terms with staggering.
So, so are you suggesting we would go back to, to when it was the IDA and see who's from each district, or how, how would we determine that?
And that would, that would be kind of cumbersome to go back through. If it's not, if that's not something easy to determine, like for example, it could have been in, in 2016, we had, we assumed that everyone's terms lapped on, lapsed on January 1st, but that's not really the case. If it was, as simple as going back just a few years, then that might be easy to fix, just sort of with a motion, once you, once you ascertain that. The easier thing, the straightforward, more straightforward thing might be that you appoint seven people tonight, decide what terms each one will have, and then we put that into legal effect within ordinance to determine the length of their terms. You wouldn't have to choose term lengths tonight. What a bare minimum might say, let's, let's fill these appointments, let's fill these seven slots.
It's, it's my understanding that we voted already on these appointments, even though there was 10, we weren't told that, because there's, there's folks on here that were voted on already and approved, or the board approved these appointments. And now we're learning we can only have seven, we're moving towards 10.
So it, it was my understanding, I wasn't here, but it was my understanding that yes, the board voted on 10 individuals. And I'm telling you, the code only allows you to have seven.
Right.
So I think tonight you should select the seven that will actually be appointed, rescind the appointments of, of the three, but engage them to, to serve the county in a sum of a capacity.
Okay.
Can we go below the seven?
I think the code says they shall, you shall have seven.
Shall have seven.
I can, I can double check that before you do.
Well, try to equal out the districts.
I got you. But, Mr. Chair, the, the thing, like, I don't, I don't know, the, the two that I had recommended, I see one year's on the list, the others moved down to interested. And after we had voted and already appointed these folks, they, they've been made aware that they were approved for this board. And they've waited for two or three meetings to, to attend, it keeps, you know, kept getting pushed back for whatever reason. So that, that's my dilemma, at least for the two that I had recommended and discussed with.
If I heard in Rodney, we weren't, we were going to appoint these people.
Well, we can't appoint, we, we can't appoint them all. I'm, I'm concerned about the two that I, that I had recommended that were, were approved and then now we've got to go back and tell one of them, according to this suggestion. I guess this is, is this a suggestion, or what is, what is the...
Yeah.
Yes, that's what it is.
Because you're...
I think the, the suggestion is based on six of the seven that are currently listed...
That's right.
Had served previously and had agreed to continue to serve, which is traditionally kind of how we've done board appointments. If they wanted to continue to serve and we were okay with it to let them continue to serve. You know, Todd was one that was on there, but obviously he wasn't on the board. He got, you know, it seemed like it was a, I'm guessing a good fit, given he's a real estate guy.
He's actually, I, I think what you're saying is true. He's actually the first one that officially applied, that's why we, that's why he's on that list. So you guys could change this completely if you wanted to, right?
Well, I knew you've got, you've got three in, in my district on, on here. And maybe one of those was the at-large point. I, I, what's the process? Are, are we...
The, the process by our rules is that the person in the district gets to make those nominations. I think that's how the rules stay. And then the at-large, if the person in that, if the, if the rep from that district doesn't, can't find somebody, then the at-large person can, you know, try to help do that. In the case specifically with Justin Jackson-Ricketts, that was one that I helped get on there because, you know, at the time, no one else was interested in doing it. But other than that, everybody else is, you know, it's up to each of the districts, as I understand it to. But we've got Three Elk Creek on there, got Two Wilson, you got Two Providence, and I don't see any Old Town. And so, you know, I, and I don't know if the EDA bylaws, because I haven't read them. They don't have, I think they were just constituted based on really almost like capabilities that they bring to the EDA, would not reconstitute it.
First chair.
Yes, sir.
I make, we, if, if, say we choose to adopt this the way it is, say the others that are interested in serving that we've already approved, as long as they still want to, will automatically go into the, we've got one that's a one-year term that will end a year from now, Jonathan Warren, who we've already approved, when we had 10, will automatically take that place. I mean, can we do that?
I think you could adopt that as sort of a, a policy or, or put them at the top of the list.
What about an advisory board? Could you, could they be on an advisory board, non-voting members to the Economic Development Authority?
You can form a committee of advisory members at, at any time.
So we can appoint them to the advisory committee to the EDA, and then they're, they can attend the meetings and be informed and provide advice?
They can do everything except vote?
Right.
They could, yes.
So then we have, we have 10 brains in the room.
You can do that.
And seven votes.
That's what seven votes.
That's all.
No, it's fine.
Would you be okay with that?
Well, I, I guess what I'm, I'm advocating for is, is Jonathan has been told, he's excited, he's a young guy. I did have a conversation with Elizabeth prior to all this, and I told her that these guys were interested. I wasn't sure how it was going to play out, so I would like to see Jonathan moved into Elizabeth's spot. And then, you know, she could be a, a non-voting participant, since that's my district. Both, both of those are in my district. If the board would support me on that. Because I understand this is a recommendation from the administration.
Yeah, it is. It's also not linked. I think Elizabeth was on there because of her, you know, she works at Skyline Bank and so she has that sort of insight. But... Get it, whatever you want to do. I like, I like the way, if we can still keep all 10 people engaged, I think that's a win for the county just...
Okay.
And I think that it will work itself out, that there will be three people on the list who are willing to change if one or two more.
So if we could, then we just pick one change then with Elizabeth moving down as an, as an advisory committee, non-voting advisory committee.
Is that what you're, I'm, I'm...
I think Elizabeth is a really sharp cookie that ought to have a vote on that and just, I mean, you, you've got the most of anybody on the...
Well, one of those is, is Mr. Fant, that's not, not, I mean, we could, we could move Ms. Ricketts down and move Jonathan up there, then we've got two young, bright people on it. I, I know both those, those, those kids very well, and they're, they're both bright. I'm not debate, you know, wanting to get into debate on that, but if Ms. Ricketts would move down to the non-voting, if, if John's okay with that, then we could move Jonathan up. He's a young guy, he's wanting to participate in the process, he's engaged. And now for me to have to go back and tell him, well, wait a minute, we, we didn't know what we were doing, we were trying to put 10 on seven.
I, I understand, Mr. Anderson, but I've also done the same thing to Darren Young, who's a young finance guy who would be good on the EDA. Problem is, we can't put them all. And we've already approved all of them, so the only win we have here is to let them be on the committee as non-voting members. Unless, unless we just sit here all night, which...
I just gave, I just gave two options. I mean, if you...
And I, and I gave an option.
And I would support your, if, if you had someone there you, you wanted to, to put Darren in as another. I, I think we've got to get more young people engaged. That's, that's my thoughts. And I, you know, I've already had this discussion with both of the folks in my district, you know, at, at some level. So I, I really would like to follow through with, with putting this young man on, you know, having an active role on this board. So if Mr. Fant were to agree, we could switch Ms. Ricketts down to the non-voting segment.
Yeah, I don't, simply because she's been on there for a year and is continuing to serve. I, I'm just, you know, I, I think we, Todd Kennedy, appoint him for four years out of the Elk Creek, which would give Elk Creek positions a pretty long stay. Ricketts is coming off in two years anyway, so I make a motion, we approve with the addition of Todd Kennedy for a four-year term as recommended.
Okay.
And create, I'm sorry, and create the advisory committee of the remaining three interested members.
Okay. Second. Any further discussion? Okay. Here in none? Roll call vote, Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Fant?
Aye.
Mr. Hattie?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
I also aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to remove all doubt, I, I followed the discussion. It probably, it would probably be best to have a motion to rescind the appointment to the EDA of the three members, just to, just to make, just remove all doubt.
Okay.
But appointed to the committee, of course, but not to the EDA itself.
Make a motion, we rescind Jonathan Warren, Amanda Shore, Darren Young from the EDA and appoint them to an advisory committee to the EDA.
Okay. Have a motion before the board, have a second. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes. With, this, this has been a point of contention for ever since we first got this several months ago, because we were, we were originally given this list and it said everybody expired. It didn't say anybody wanted to stay, didn't say anybody might stay. So we, we, we continue to have these issues, for whatever reason, if it's administrative problem, which it appears to be, I don't know. Even with Ms. Blevins, we were told here in the meeting that she wasn't interested. I talked to Ms. Blevins right after the meeting, and that was not the conversation that I had. So I, I don't know why, what, I'm, I'm getting such a pushback on this one, I'm just trying to get two of my folks from my district that I've talked to and recruited. And we come in here, we talk about how hard it is to get volunteers to do things and get involved and get engaged, and then when we follow through the process as it's laid out before us, only to get shot down because of whatever reason. And I don't, I don't know Ms. Ricketts, I don't know how long she's lived here, but I do know that Jonathan's born and raised here, lived here his entire life, as has his family. And, and tonight, to deny that appointment, I think, is horrendous. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Fant?
Yes.
Mr. Hattie?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
I also aye. Okay. Next, move to county administrators' report.
We've still got a couple more.
Oh, I mean, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to rush things on. All right, let's see, looks like Mount Rogers PDC.
Yes. Go ahead. Planning Commission represented to serve on the MRPDC. We discussed this at our, it was a suggestion made that Mr. Brian Walls, the Planning Commission chair should serve on the Mount Rogers PDC, and he has agreed to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Fant?
Aye.
Mr. Hattie?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
I also aye. Next would be the Twin County Pre-Clinic.
Yes, the, the pre-clinic has indicated they would, they would welcome a board member to be placed on their board.
Any interest, Mr. Baker?
I'm not interested, Mr. Chair, but I would like to say, I had discussions with them back when first got sworn in, maybe even prior to that, and they, they had expressed interest. I was interested, but since then, I've been appointed or represent on several different boards, and I, I just can't take on that at this time with this board. So I'm not interested.
What's their meeting frequency? Is it monthly, do?
It's monthly, yeah.
They would like, or they got to have?
They would like.
What, are there any requirements other than it's a board member?
Not that I would wear them, no.
Traditionally, I think, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It was the, the county administrators that were on that board in the past, if my understanding of what they told me was correct. So I don't know if Mr. Shepley has, has time to be interested or not, but that might be an option.
How about we just table this one and revisit it later next meeting?
Well, could we let him answer?
Oh, yeah.
I was saying, I just suggested in the past, the county administrator had sat on that board, and if you were interested, we, we make it, you know, grant that, if, just putting it kind of on...
Yeah, I think if, if that's what the boards wish would be. I did serve on it before, and I switched over to, I was also on the board at Twin County Hospital. And so I chose between the two at that time. At that time, it was Twin County Hospital. So it's not a requirement that they have the county administrator on this board. They, they did indicate that they, in the past, that's a, they would welcome that.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we appoint county administrator if, if he is agreeable to, to this, to the County Pre-Clinic.
Second. All in favor, she can file the same, aye?
Aye.
I also aye. Okay. Rejoin the improvement commission?
Yes, this is something new, the, the casino in Bristol. You know, there are several cities in the state competing to get, to get the casino. And it appears that the Bristol, Virginia, application included indicating that they would give a certain amount of money to several counties that are within private... Do you know the details of this, Steve? I can...
Other than, not really, other than what we've discussed.
Okay. And so Grayson County, we were visited several months ago to be told that we were the farthest county away from Bristol that would be receiving this annual money from them once their operations are up and going. And what they indicated to us and to the other counties is that each county would receive $700,000 per year from the Bristol Casino. Now they're, unless they've started functioning already, which I don't think they have. I think they're delayed a little bit. Once they start to function, then a full year's worth of money to us would be $700,000. And there's several other counties that will also get that money that are closer to Bristol than we are in Virginia. And so they are, and there's certain requirements of what that money can be spent on. One of the key things they want that money to be spent on is education. And they're, they're forming a board of county administrators or, it could be other people to, to come together to talk about the money and, and what's coming out and what's, what their people are eligible for. And they've asked that we have a representative on that board, and I would be willing to do that if that's what the board, if that's the board's preference. Glad to serve on that board.
Just, there's an article in Virginia Business Magazine saying that the Bristol Temporary Casino is looking to open July 8th, and then the permanent grand opening would be two years from now.
Oh, okay.
I'll make that motion. And we'll have Mr. Shepley to that board for that commission. Okay? Okay. Have a motion before the board, is there a second? Second. Okay. Have a second. Further discussion?
Is that, are they asking for county administrators, or are they just asking someone from the county?
Someone from the county. The person that contacted me was the county administrator from, with county.
I thought it said county administrator.
The letters.
Oh, they did say county administrator, or deputy county administrator.
We have a motion before the board, a second. Discussion ended, we'll go ahead with a vote. All favor sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
I also aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
It appears that's it on my points. Okay. Next, county administrators' report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, several things, positive things have happened. One is that I hope everyone's had a chance to see the roof that's on the farmer's market, which, you know, the county contributed to making that happen, and they did a great job on that. There's still several more steps to go down the road that the town will be funding, but we feel real good about the work that's been done and how it's looking now. If you haven't seen it, take a close look at it.
How much did we contribute to that?
The next thing I want to tell you about is we won a national award from the National Association of Counties for the partnership that was developed between Appalachian Power and Grayson County and the State of Virginia and Giga Beam in the broadband arena. So we were just notified yesterday that Grayson County was going to be recognized for that We have received two grants through Tracy Cornett, our tourism director, for, to help us with marketing, which is perfect, bless you. Perfect for right now heading into the summer, where we're trying to attract as many tourists as we can, that they total up to about $30,000. And one is from the Virginia Tourism Corporation, the other was from Virginia DMO. And so that's another positive. Let's see, what else? Oh, got an update on, oh, we have, when it comes to Baywood, we met with the architects and we met with the rooftop folks that provide the childcare, and they are going to be able to move into the facility, and the facility will be ready for them in August, for them to move the rooftops. What's the name for it?
Mixed delivery.
Mixed delivery, which includes what in particular, Lisa?
Three and four-year-olds.
Three and four-year-olds. So we, that's going to be a nice addition to what we do. And so we've got what Dr. Wicks talked about, we've got the childcare piece and we've got the healthcare piece. So there are multiple parts going into that facility.
I got a question, Mr. Chair. Where, previous board meeting, I think it was in April, there was some issue about the deed. You indicated that the heirs were not located. I think we've had some heirs come forth of the deeds you referenced at that time. Can you update us on?
Yes, Steve is going to give you an update on that.
Yeah, and so I have gone back through the title records and was able to determine that the Phoebe Hampton deed with the heirs of Phoebe Hampton and a, call it a remainder interest, for lack of a better term, or a reversion interest to J.F. Wingate is not in the chain of title to this property. When you go back through the various deeds by which the Baywood property was assembled, that property in question was, it's not this property. It's a different, it's deeds of a different property to Grayson County's.
When that deed references Baywood School, what is it referencing? The deed that you're saying is not involved?
The Hampton?
The Hampton deed with the J.F. Wingate heirs references the Baywood School. What is, if it's not the correct deed, what are they referencing? Because I think the deed, the other deed that you provided last night referenced Baywood High School, if I, I thought I saw that in there.
I think, that may have been one of the deeds that were referenced, Baywood High School.
And so the deed that was granted from the school system to the county has not yet been recorded, is that?
That's correct.
So where has that deed been since 2019?
I think it's been in the county administration office.
Were you aware of that?
Absolutely not.
It's something that I just became aware of, maybe ten days ago.
How did you become aware of it, if you know?
I was looking back through the records that I had, and I was able to determine that what was provided to me were the resolution whereby the school board approved the conveyance of that property to the county. I had the deed also, a copy of the, a scanned copy of the deed that was signed by representatives of the school board. But I did not have a version that was signed by the county, and I did not have the recorded version. So I asked about that. I looked on the circuit court clerk's available land records I have access to remotely, and I was able to find that, well, I wasn't able to find the recorded version of that. And so I contacted Ms. Osborne, Mr. Shepley, and Mr. Smith to kind of backtrack through the history, and we were able to locate it in the county administration office. The best I can determine of what happened is on the, probably the 13th of June or July in 2019, I think it was June, the board of supervisors voted to accept the conveyance from the school board. The next day, Ms. Osborne emailed me and asked me to sign off on it, approve it as the form so that it could be recorded and then Mr. Shepley would sign off.
You're talking about 2019?
2019, yeah. The last thing that I have in my records is an email where I asked my assistant to print it for my signature. And I don't, I don't see any records in my files beyond that time. So I don't know whether, I can't say whether a signed copy came from my office to the county administrator's office, but in any event, it was not recorded.
So the original deed that we had been discussing previously, that had the heirs on there, J.F. Wingate being one of those.
Called the Hampton deed.
We'll call that the Hampton deed. So that, where did we come up with that? How did that get into play?
That was provided to me by Mr. Smith, who, it's my understanding, obtained it from the clerk of court, someone in the clerk of court's office.
That's right.
Because.
I went down and asked everyone, all of them is the one that does a lot of deed work, and I just went down and said, give me, give me anything you have on Baywood.
And that would have been the only deed recorded, because this other deed's been in the administrator's office since 2019. Is that, is that why we were using the old deed? I mean, because if you think about it, we're told there's no heirs, then we find heirs, and then after we find heirs, now we also find a deed that's been, that's been in the desk drawer since 2019. The perception of this is not good.
I agree. I agree. It's sort of a case where everything that could have gone wrong seems to have gone wrong.
Right.
And it was just sort of a miscommunication. When I received the deed from Mr. Smith, he said that this is the deed that I got from the clerk's office, is there a problem with the heirs? So that's what I began analyzing, and that's the deed that I sent you a few weeks ago.
The Phoebe Hampton.
The Phoebe Hampton, yeah. And in the process of reviewing that and analyzing that, I just couldn't see how that fits in to the property. And so I expanded the search, and that's when I discovered that the 2019 deed was never recorded. But that 2019 deed does have the citations to sort of adverse back and see where the properties were conveyed.
Is that based on the GIS? Is that what you're referring to, where the current deed that you're referring to, not the Phoebe Hampton deed, reverts back to the, is that the GIS? Is that how we were able to determine that is the actual deed?
Two ways. That is the, that's the deed to the Baywood School that the school board conveyed. In that deed, there are deed book page and reference numbers to all of the source deeds whereby the school obtained title. And when you go back and you review all of those deeds to the school board, none of them are the Hampton deed, and none of them purport to have a limitation of reversion interest or anything like that. So the property is clear. I engaged a title search as well, as well as looking at it myself. We had a title company research the title, and it is good, marketable title that can be insured with a title insurance policy, and I would recommend it.
And how long ago has it been since you did the title search to get us a clear deed to this property that we can insure? How long has that been?
I just got the title report back last night, or yesterday.
As soon as yesterday?
Yeah.
Would this stop being customary that you, something you would do before you would invest millions of dollars into a property? I'm just, I'm just being hypothetical. Would that normally be the procedure, you would do that first?
Yes. When the, when local governing bodies acquire property, we always recommend doing title work and obtaining title insurance. However, it's not uncommon when you're getting a property from a related governmental entity like the school board, for them to just, it's not uncommon to just accept the deed and record it. In this case, you know, everything that could have gone wrong seems to have, with the misunderstandings.
Right. And I understand, I can understand the lack of communication. I remember saying, I was on the school board when we closed it and we reverted it back to the county. And I remember there was discussion then it needed to be used for educational purposes, because that didn't, that wasn't something that falls just on, that's not something Mitch pulled out of his hat, so to speak. I mean, that was there prior to him researching it, that those thoughts and those comments weren't go that far back.
That wasn't valid limitation, or well, that was a limitation that was in a deed in some chain of title, but just not in the particular parcels that assembled this Baywood property.
And has the deed yet been recorded, or?
It hasn't yet. I advised, once we found out that we still had possession of it, I advised not to record it until we were able to obtain a title insurance policy. So that now that we've got an offer of title insurance, we can record with title insurance if that's what you choose to do, and again, that's my recommendation.
Okay. All right. So my next question, Mr. Administrator, is what is the situation now with the water? Do we have, do we have a building permit granted by the building inspector to start the process, or is there a holdup with the water?
Well, we shifted away from the original water source for the building, so we're not using the original water source that had to go through a specific filter to be able to enter the school. What we're doing now is looking at digging a new well, and that's where the water, the water approach is, and no longer the old way, it's digging a new well to establish a new water source.
So do we have to have that new well before we can get a building permit from the building inspector?
We have to, do you know the details of it?
I don't think so. I mean, that's part of the process, I know that there will be a new well, but I'd have to check on that.
Well, do you have a building permit yet?
When you say building permit, can you define what you're saying?
Has the, I know that the inspector's probably looked at the plans, probably approved the plans, that the architects, engineers, whatever. But has he granted a permit to begin construction or reconstruction?
Not to occupy the building, but.
To undertake the, to undertake the work on the property.
Yeah.
The certificate of occupancy would be a different question.
Right.
But is there a building permit to start the work?
I think he has issued it.
So is that your position, he has issued a building permit to start?
Well, I just copied everything that's been discussed about it, and I've been doing it up until the last minute I came in here. So you can't just answer the question clearly before you wait a second.
Do you want to change your statement, Mitch, or are you equivocally saying?
I also is, I think he has, that's not.
Okay, okay. All right.
Corn would do the building permit.
Pardon me?
Corn Construction will get your own building permit. You don't have to have a well done to do a building permit. But if you're going to build a house, it is smart to have a well, to make sure you've got a well, but you don't have to have a well before a building permit.
I agree, it's smart to have a well. It's also smart to have a clear deed, but the building inspector has to issue the building permit from the county, whether it's corn requesting or whatever construction company's requesting. And that was my question.
Is that on the lady's seat? Continue with your report, sir.
Yes. I, probably about a year ago, started talking with the board about the future, and what things we're having in the future, and I'd just like to, I've had a chance to give this to my chairman this morning, I'd like to read it to the board with the chairman's permission. So, May 12, 2022, Board of Supervisors, thank you for providing me with this opportunity to serve the great people of Grayson County for the past five years. I am honored that you had the confidence in me to serve the people of this county. I am particularly grateful to the people of the county that have supported me and made me feel so welcome over the past five years. When I was first hired, I told the board that I would probably work here through age 65. I will be turning 65 this Saturday. I've spent five years away from my wife and son, and I miss them dearly. During this time, I've been, the time I've been away, my dad passed away, and two weeks ago, my mom, well, during that time, my mom has developed Alzheimer's disease. Two weeks ago, she fell and broke her hip. She had to have emergency surgery, and she is recovering in a rehab center in Wilmington, North Carolina. I, my sister lives in the county, but she is ill, unfortunately. And so it's incumbent on me, and what I want to do to help my mom, I want to be able to get down and be with her, and she's 92 years old, and I'm not sure how much longer she's going to be with us, but I, as a dutiful son, I want to be there with her. For all these reasons, I feel that it's time for me to move on to the next phase of my life. Therefore, I officially notify the board of my impending retirement from this role. As required by my contact, I will continue to work for the next 90 days. My last day of work will be August 10, 2022. Again, I appreciate the great people of Grayson County, and I've been honored to serve all of our citizens for the past five years. Liam Shepley. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepley.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate your work.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Well, that's a hell of a way to end your report.
I think I have that list, unless there's any additions to it, Mitch? Is there another report?
I don't know. There was a number of people that had signed up to speak for the six-year plan, which only left one name that was on, it was Ms. Anne Rose.
I'm the only one speaking?
You can do it, Anne.
Come on, you guys. Sorry, I may not know somebody. My name is Anne Rose, I live at 15 Discovery Lane at Elk Creek. You know, I came to, I came to the January meeting and I listened to the. came to the January meeting, and I listened to this three, I guess it was like three, three parts to this Baywood project. And it just seemed a little murky to me, you know, about, about how we're going to be spending all this money, and we got a grant, and now we're going to, we're going to spend 1.5 million plus, and it's going to end up being much more than that. So I guess I have concerns about that. How much, how much more money is it going to cost? You know, I know the board's already allocated this money, but, you know, I don't, I don't have a lot of confidence in a project that's so far away. And is it really going, is it going to be a methadone clinic? Is that what it's going to end up being? And it's going to be childcare? Suboxone? You know, so I, there's all these things that, that people that I associate with have questions about. And at the January meeting, we had, there was the police need radios, they need towers, the police need this, you know, so I, and here we are, we're spending 1.5 million dollars on something that, to me, I feel is kind of repetitive. It's at one end of the county. In fact, we just drilled there today, my husband and I. We said, well, let's just go see where this place is at, you know. So I guess I just see it as a bottomless pit. That's what I see it as. And I also see it as Grayson's, Grayson County citizens funding a private medical agency. That's my opinion. That's how the people that I associate with feel. And, and it, does the Baywood community people that live around it, they didn't know it, it may be, end up being a suboxone clinic? Do they know that, methadone place? Do they know that? I guess, I heard that it's, it closed, what, four or five years ago, Baywood closed, the board didn't want to buy any well, the board had a, there was an elevator that needed to be put in there, there's asbestos, and now all of a sudden, gee, let's, let's do it again, you know, let's, let's, let's try and rehab this building for this, for this, for this clinic, and the childcare, and the education. But I just, I just have concerns of repetitive, repetitive thing, and it's a private company. And that's how I feel about it. Let me see, what else did I have? And two cents of our tax dollars have already been obligated to this project. It seems like it's, it's kind of rushed through. And I think that, I think people like me, we still have lots of concerns about this project. And people that I associate with are wondering, Supervisor Belton's son, is he going to somehow, how do I word it, benefit from this project, from the MOOG? M-O-O-G? I mean, people talking about that. People are talking about that. So, you know, it's not, it's not just me talking about these questions and concerns that our citizens have, footing this bill is going to be much more than 1.5 million dollars. We know that. So, you know, I'd feel, I would feel better if there was more county discussion, if the citizens were more involved, and it was a little bit more transparent about what's actually going to be going on in this place. And it's just funny about this whole deed thing you kind of were just talking about. It's like, presto, boom, you know, deed appeared. So that's what people that I run with, people that I associate with, within this county are concerned about. There just seems to be a little bit too much non-transparent stuff going on in here with our tax money. That's how I feel.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Ash, I know my name's not down there. I started writing down when I was, so many other people. I would like, if you don't mind, I would like to just make two, probably two cents, thank you. Is that okay?
Put your camera guy step up here.
Sure. I just, like I say, there were so many people here tonight, and I decided to be quiet.
How do you spell your name, what you're?
Alwanda Pinion.
Alwanda?
9476 Elk Creek Parkway, Elk Creek, Virginia.
9674.
Yeah, somewhere around there. The deed concerns me tremendously, because I worked for the attorney that, when, when the Baywood School was closed, Mr. Wilmore came to the office and asked for him to do a complete title search on this, on all the Baywood property. He brought, he brought in and handed him these deeds. And he spent hours going through this. And I distinctly remember that there was a portion of that property, if it was not used for educational purposes, would revert back to heirs. I have reached out to him. I'm hoping to get a thumb drive with that information on it. But I, I mean, that's, my memory isn't that far out, just because I've lost a little bit of it over my, you know, because I'm 69 years old, I'm still not crazy. I do remember these conversations, and I remember this distinctly going on paper. So, and then it was handed, everything was handed back to Mr. Wilmore. What attorney prepared that deed? Do you, do you know what the name was?
The deed to the?
To the, to the, the property that has not been recorded. Okay. That's the attorney I work for.
All right. So have that, how would we have this if, it's no one made mention of request for super project time, registered speakers. So have on our agenda a closed session. And motion to move into closed session for discussion related to investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved pursuant to 2.2-3711A6 of the Code of Virginia, and for the, Bishop, I use his reader as your consultation, with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to give the third component of the closed session, the general topic would be possible discussion concerning negotiations with a community service organization.
Community services. Okay. May I entertain my motion to go into closed session?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. I also, in closed session. Thank you.